Yeah, but they can take that apart.
How much is one of the, how much is it gonna cost them to go out and do that? I don't know if it's a monthly thing or if it would be an annual thing, like a water heater flush.
Oh, no, I mean, I understood Rick correctly. It's just sitting there for a year.
It's getting, it's eroding.
Well, it's not necessarily the meter. It's a piece of pipe between the meter and the main line. It gets built up because we have variable pipe. But not that it gets in there.
And then we have to re-tap it.
Which, which means if we come and disconnect that meter, pull it off, let it flush for about two minutes, all that stuff's gonna clear out. That piece of line is what's in the middle of the street. I think that if we get that, again, like I said, we're not gonna have hundreds of these. We're gonna have a handful of people that are paying them. And I think that if you're paying them, you should receive the benefit of the doubt that you're doing what you need to do as a citizen. Once you stop paying that, then yeah.
Then you start that abandoned tap thing. Cause if you are paying, you're paying attention to it. You're.
Right, you're probably there going along. You're probably taking care of it.
You're exactly, exactly. Cause there are a handful of those around town. I keep going back to Tom's house over on Fifth Street. It's a maintained house. He takes care of the property, everything like that. If he was paying the thirty dollar a month fee, you know, leave his tap there or whatever.
Well, my father would do that in the summer. He would, he would get a house on air from us. And then he would come through, he'd live here for a while, then he'd go to Michigan for a while. And he would just pay the, the small fee there in Arizona to keep things on. And then just turn it all right back on to the floor. So when you got down there, they never shut them off.
So is this, this is specific for just water service? If a tenant was living there and then they just disappeared for a year, is that how?
Or an owner. I mean, anybody that turns on the utility there. But essentially it falls onto the owner. Like I have a rental or Gary has rentals. If, if my tenant wasn't there, I own that property. And if I wasn't paying that dormant fee of thirty dollars a month, then I'm as the owner responsible for that fee.
When you abandon that completely, that's kind of the wording that I was.
Yes.
Right.
So is what people are saying over there is that if, if they don't pay the thirty dollars, then we remove the meter in charge of the tap fee.
Next, when they, after a year, for two years. We would pull their meters.
That's when we would start that.
Yeah, we would pull it. And then when they wanted to reconnect or they sold the property or whatnot, the next person that came along would have to pay for a new tap, water tap and a new sewer tap to reconnect to the system.
So that's when we just pass it.
So there's kind of two pieces to it. There's you're not living there and you've turned on your, off your utility service, but you're paying a thirty dollar a month fee and you've maintained that for however long. Those people were, I think where we're going is that we don't feel that those people need to be penalized and have to pay a re-tap fee when they come back, even if it's three, five years down the road. Whereas if somebody abandons it and they're not paying that thirty dollar a month fee at a one-year point or a two-year point, I mean, I'm okay with a one-year point in, in that scenario. If they're paying the thirty dollar fee, okay, cool. But if they get to a year and they haven't had service, they're not paying that thirty dollar fee, let's pull that meter and let's, you know, charge them a re-tap fee if somebody comes along and buys that property or something like that. Unless they're doing construction, unless they, you know, there are those other things that fall into place that could exempt it from that, correct?
Yeah. Okay, so if we, so the, the way that it's stated is if a building has been razed or demolished and water service is abandoned, that's one. Or a property has not received water service for a period of one year, that's two. Then the customer's service shall be disconnected from the curb stop and the meter shall be removed by the city. If water service is not resumed within one year after disconnection of the water service for any reason, then the existing tap is deemed abandoned.
So that is a two-year process?
Yeah, so we must, yeah, we must not, so, cause I remember Walson Works being two years, so I think this is the way that they had it. And I think that's where we got feedback that they would like it to be a little faster than that.
So if we put into this abandonment clause, if they are not paying the dormant fee, these items, this, that's when it becomes abandoned after a period of, we can even say six months is when. Cause if they're not gonna pay it for six months, they're not gonna pay it.
Okay, so.
Exactly.
So I said one and then two, and then if we said, or a dormant uti- or the dormant utility fee has not been paid for a period of one year, then then they would go in, disconnect from the curb stop, meter would be removed. And then if water service was not resumed within one year after disconnection, then it would be deemed abandoned.
I mean, I, I think that fully gives somebody a chance to be responsible.
I think that I'd like to see a caveat put in there after, it would be after this, that if the property is sold, that I wouldn't wanna have to penalize that back wherever dormancy fee to the new person. And I would wanna work with them at a different price possibly to get a new tap. So that we don't, because if, if we raise these tap fees too high and somebody abandons it and then just it gets sold at tax auction or it gets sold however, you know, grandma died and the kid sold it. We hinder growth by having too high of tax fees. I think my house went to auction at fifteen thousand. If I have to pay you fifteen thousand per tap, I'm not living there. Enjoy your abandoned building.
You might not, but somebody may.
Yeah.
If, if we're able to do this in what the process, what we should be doing with all of these is when we're not able to collect, you know, we're, we're sending those liens over to the county. So when they are buying, Title's gonna see that there's that lien and you know, they're gonna have to work that out between buyer and seller, but the city would be compensated for, you know, for, for these. And that's, that's, I think, is something that really hasn't happened in, in a lot of, in, in our the work order, the work that's been done on some of the code violation cleanups and.
Can I just, cause I think, I thought the whole reason that this issue came up was really because and it's not really punish people with thirty dollars a month for having a home. That's like, that's not really incentive enough for the little girl three hundred dollars a year to, to sit vacant if that's what they wanna do with them. It's to stop the city from eating five to ten thousand dollars in fees every time we have to keep redoing this for people. I mean, what are we doing? If we do it ten times a year, we're eating seventy-five thousand dollars. So the point is to put that instead of being the city's responsibility, being the customer's responsibility. Cause it wouldn't have even happened if they had water bill for their house. So that was what I thought the goal was. And if, if we're shifting this over where it's like, well, we can just pay thirty dollars a month in perpetuity, then they're gonna have to pay that thirty dollars a month for fifteen years to cover the cost of that tap. So that's, that's where my concern is. Cause otherwise we might as well not do this at all.
But this half's not gonna wear out. If it's being properly brushed and being properly taken care of for that thirty a month, that's.
But that's the thing, so, so, but, but, so all of us, because that doesn't cover it. So all of the existing customers who do have service, who are contributing to the system are the ones sharing that cost. And that's kind of where we are today with all of our systems.
They send a dude out chasing thirty minutes to flush the tap twice a year, maybe? That, that, that's three hundred and sixty.
There's a lot of things we've, we've asked for and that we've tried to do that, you know, one of the things we're gonna see in our street sweeper thing that manpower and, you know, some of those resources that we're under-resourced. You know, so this would be another one that we're adding. Because they're not real taps. They're, they're, they're ghosts. You can say they're ghost taps. Because they're not really people who are participating in the system.
So I feel like we're, we're talking about two totally different things though here. I feel like this is one piece. And then when we go to talk about the tap fees, then we should talk about the, who's gonna, are we gonna work with people? Are we, what are we gonna raise? This, at this point, we can change this all we want. Right now it costs them seven hundred and fifty dollars to get a tap. I mean, right now this, you change this and that doesn't change any cost right now. We haven't even rushed the subject of where are we going with our tap fees than the last time we discussed it, right? I mean, this had, this is something totally separate from that. This says, we're gonna call it abandoned after a certain period of time and X, Y, or Z happens. You know, then after that period of time and somebody comes back then, or they want a new one, now what are our tap fees gonna do? So.
So are we comfortable with it being two-year process like this then?
Yeah, I mean, with adding what's, with adding that in, so that we can say we're accomplishing this and moving on to the next thing.
Worrying that it would be one year after no payment.
I just want, I just wanna complete, I feel like we're talking services around so many things. I just wanna complete.
And, and the, and the cold these do go together because, because if we, if we look at abandoning and then, you know, two years and, and a month later, somebody comes and is ready to do something, now we've just created a, we are, you know, low now, but whatever that becomes.
Doing a test. So, but do we look at it as, do we look at it as brand new taps here or a re-tap here? And maybe they have two different costs associated with them. You know, if there's already a tap there and maybe it hasn't been maintained, but it's already there. It's not gonna quite take as long, but it still has to be done. I mean, it's still a lot of work to re-tap as it is versus tap and putting in a brand new, you'd have to dig it up. I mean, it's a lot of work to do regardless.
I'm, I'm gonna jump in here. I can't get in there, so I'm just gonna jump in. The thirty dollar dormant fee, my understanding was to help free up the cost of the infrastructure, the police service, the fire service. That's what the thirty dollars is for. Cause you help maintain everything because everybody else that is paying their bill is covering that. These people still have that. Now, if they leave the house, that's what that thirty dollars is for. That's my understanding. They come back and they want that. My understanding, Rick was saying after about a year, the tap should come out. For, for, for the best thing for, for the equipment. Take it out. People come back in, whether it's the same owner or if it's a different owner, if it's sold, they come in, they pay the actual cost of re-tap. There's, I mean, we're not in it to make money. Charge them whatever it costs to re-tap. You're charging them the thirty for that. And if it's not being paid, then you do the lien, whatever you gotta do. But when it comes to recap, charge it whatever it's gonna cost.
I just, that's, that's exactly where we're, where we're headed.
Because I think.
And if it's one year, it's one year. If it's two years, it's two years.
I think there's this, been this talk about like, oh, it's for police services and stuff. I, I don't think that's even legal. But even if it is, in my mind, what that thirty dollars really covers is just maintaining the water line and the sewer line in front of their house. Because.
Well, that's what it has to be. The other, the other piece, the fire, that's what our property taxes cover. We can't, water infrastructure cannot pay for all that other stuff we, we speak about all the time.
Yeah, yeah, that was, it was kind of, I think, thrown out as an example, as an example. And you know, that was probably a bad example. But yeah, just focus on water and sewer infrastructure.
That's your deposit.
So currently, that currently, okay, we have one of these, we have one of these homes that, you know, has, has been vacant, abandoned for ten years. Right now, if somebody wants to come in and turn on service, they would be paying that, whatever it is, hundred and something. But that, that whatever's there isn't gonna work. So our guys would be going out and they would be reconnecting them. And, and right now we don't have anything to.
Charge them.
To, to, you know, make sure that they're paying for the work that was done. So that's, that's what this accomplishes, is making sure that we have something in, in those cases. Yeah, there.
One quick observation, your tap fees are gonna have to go up. The state constitutional amendment raises the minimum wage. So your labor costs are gonna go up every year.
Cause we haven't raised.
The minimum wage drives both all boats.
We, we, that's, we, we have, we have that coming and this is kind of step one and then that'll be step two. But we, there is gonna be a plan to increase the water tap, sewer tap fees.
But just so there's some respect there, right? Like we're, we're charging like ten percent what like other cities charge for a tap fee. Like that's, that's why this is such an issue.
I guarantee you, the tap fees are gonna be higher than it is today. You'll have to.
I mean, we could just do it so that customers pay a tap fee if they need a tap. I mean, what's wrong with doing that? Like, have it disconnected as long as you want, but it, it ain't gonna work. And when it doesn't, you're gonna pay for a new one because.
I just don't see somebody coming into town, gonna spend money to fix up a house. I mean, I get next situation, but that's honestly not typical. I mean, most people.
That revolves almost for tap fees. That cheap tax auctions and they're rebuilding them, you would run these people off because of that.
I, I, I just don't, I just don't agree with that. I mean, people that come in and buy properties that they're going to fix up and/or sell or rent, they're going to be able to spend, if they're gonna spend fifteen on a house and they're gonna put fifty in it to make it nice, they've got an extra fifteen grand to pay the tap fees. And I don't even think we're gonna be at fifteen grand.
The homes are going for two hundred and fifty dollars a square.
A thousand square foot is a quarter of a million dollars. Five grand ain't gonna run them off.
No, and that's where I'm at too. I mean, even if they're paying five and five.
And then, and then one of the things too, I think, I don't know if you were talking about, you know, kind of actual costs, but that was one of the reasons why a lot of them are set, you know, kind of a flat fee is so that way people can make a plan. You know, if it was actual cost, then it's gonna be a little harder for them to.
Well, I think what I meant was like instead of, you're gonna pay a tap fee a year or two. It's just if you need a tap fee, you'll pay the tap fee. So like if they go too long, we could charge them the thirty bucks forever, but then if.
I feel like you're making it too gray there. You've gotta have it black and white. At this point, this is what happens. At this point, this is what happens. There's not, well, if it does this and that. If this happens, this happens, you know? They've not paid the fee, it's been abandoned, and now it's changed hands. It's already been abandoned for two years. That person takes on, maybe not back fees other than what liens have been filed, but that person takes on responsibility for that property from the moment they take it on and move forward. If they have to pay tap fees, they have to, that's part of development. That's part of buying properties and renovating them. Like that's just the way, like that's just part of it.
I'm fine with that. I just thought we were getting pushback, so that's.
Let me ask the question then. So everything from the meter to my house is my responsibility as the homeowner. Any break in there, I have to deal with. Anything that goes on in there, I have to deal with. That's gas, water, sewer, everything. I pay a fee, gas, water, sewer for everything outside of my property. Why is the city not maintaining that? Why do I have to pay an extra fee because it wasn't maintained on the city side? To the fact that the tap doesn't work now because I wasn't there for a few years, or I bought the house and it was empty for a few years. If the city's being paid, we pay a monthly bill, we pay taxes and whatnot to maintain our infrastructure. If the city's not doing their end, why is it now on me as the homeowner that's not on my end? That's not my, that is not my part of infrastructure.
That property. That was your choice and you're right.
The city didn't maintain their infrastructure.
So in your example, are you, in your example though, are you saying that you're a homeowner who has left your property vacant for numerous years?
I think I could be some guy who just moved into town and bought a house. That infrastructure should have been there. If that infrastructure was part of it, the city should be maintaining that infrastructure. What that looks like may be different for each individual property. But we are paying as, as citizens and everybody who owns here is paying to maintain that infrastructure. If it's not being maintained, irregardless of the house is abandoned or if it's with ten people living in it, then what is that money being done?
The tap is actually purchased by the original person. So I mean, honestly, that tap is owned by the property owner. The tap itself, I'm not talking about the meter, the tap, the tap into the line, you, is part of your property. From that tap to the back, you own that. You paid for that tap. That's yours.
I was told that my property ends at that side of the meter.
And it rises, you bring it up and for the other city, they tell you that it's theirs. Everything in, in front of the meter is yours.
Yeah, that's what I was always told was at the meter to my house, at my meter to the street is the city.
Yeah, but you paid for that tap. Somebody along the way paid for that tap.
But that tap is infrastructure, correct? So that's city's responsibility. And that's what I'm saying.
So what, what would your, what would your solution be? Would, would your solution to be for all of us to continue footing the bill and this person come in and prospect and just jump right into our system? Cause that's, you know, I think that's really kind of what we've been seeing and, and we know, you know, across the board, everything.
And how is that bad?
We're under.
So we lose five grand every time someone comes into town.
It's bad for the people who have been participating in the system.
But you took a house that wasn't being paid, that wasn't paying in, and now they're paying in. Now they're a recurring income.
Okay, but.
It's, it's their, it's their investment and they know part of that investment.
The city collects taxes on that sale. The city collects fees when we, when they turn on their water, sewer, gas, they collect taxes for that person being there. When the property taxes are raised because that person makes the house better, we collect a piece of that. That looks like that.
We do, and that's, and that's, that's the importance of development. And that's why we're trying, we're trying to encourage development. You know, so we're not, we're not putting these ridiculous fees on there. It's really just about making sure that, that we are collecting enough for, you know, our enterprises to maintain. But then also now we, you know, start to build to sustain.
What I'm saying is that if we are currently collecting, connecting, collecting enough to maintain these.
Right.
We're doing something wrong and we need to find another way to, to, to collect that versus running these tap fees up. I'm, I'm not saying they don't need to.
So what, what is, what is that response? Cause to me that sounds like the people who are participating need to pay more.
Well.
Is that what you're saying?
And the people who are participating.
So you wanna tax us all more who have already been participating? Because someone wants to keep their property vacant for twenty years?
I think it's a bad, it's a bad precedent to set to penalize people who were coming in and buying properties or trying to rehab properties or bringing properties back to life that haven't been versus, I mean, if, if we were a good city and we had two or three abandoned houses, okay, cool. Yeah, we may be able to do that. A good chunk of our town is abandoned houses and we're talking decades.
And, and that's, that is the problem because this, this system was built around a hundred percent.
It feels like the solution is to penalize those of us that are already participating.
That's what I'm hearing is Nick wants to tax all of us who are paying the system, let it speak for itself.
Well, no, but that's what we're hearing. So, so the tap gets abandoned. So the tap gets abandoned, we have to go out and dig a hole and we spend five thousand dollars in time and manpower and equipment charges and all this stuff. And they pay a hundred and fifty dollars to hook it up because they bought the house and that's all they pay. So we're out forty-five hundred dollars every time someone comes in and does that. And your solution is to raise everybody's utility fees or tax everybody more so that those of us that are already here paying our bills get penalized, but you don't get penalized. And the people that come in don't get penalized. So, so who are we penalizing? You don't want them to be penalized, but we're gonna penalize.
So what do you, what do you?
I'm not penalizing anybody.
That's what it sounds like.
I'm saying that we need to find a way to make sure that there has to be a different way to deal with these properties that have been abandoned for a decade. Versus the fact that a house just happens to go up on, you know, it's been two years. I, I don't think that you could, I don't think that they're the same thing.
So do you want to see this, this time amount increased up to like five years or something?
You know what? The way, the way we did that with the abandonment, I'm not against that. I'm just saying we need to find a way that we're, that we need to, that's our infrastructure. Why are we not maintaining it? I don't think it's that hard to flush a line if we have a handful of properties that need that. I mean.
So, okay, no, so are you just, are you just talking about something totally, you know, like a, a administrative piece that needs to be changed to make sure that things are being maintained?
Possibly. I think that may be part of it. But I mean, think about it like this. When, when, when winter hits, I go pull the swamp cooler out the window and I drain that line. And, and I make sure that water's out of there and I flush that to make sure that that doesn't freeze over the winter. That doesn't take that long. That, if, if we've got properties that are empty and we know that and they're paying their, their dormancy fee or whatever, go flush that line once a year, twice a year and keep that tap healthy so that it can be reused. Now, after we read the piece.
And, and I hear that. And one of the things I kind of wanna note on something that Nick just said is I think these, I kind of came at the same time. I think the abandoned tap fee actually did come up before the dormant was noticed, that it hadn't been charged. You know, but, so that's something too, you know, if, if we were collecting that already, which we are, we haven't.
We're not, no, we're playing catch up.
We're gonna start, we're playing catch up. So I, I get that, that argument. Because if, in the scenario, once we are collecting that, it's still not covering, it's not covering enough, but it's a little bit something. It's more than today. And, and then I think, you know, what you're saying there works. But so, you know, we, these, these discussions have kind of.
Been a few for a while in a different manner.
Come, these, this one started first and then that's where the question of the dormant fee came up. And then I think we heard, I don't know if it's JR, Rebecca, somebody kind of brought us some, you know, history that, hey, this was passed. And we found that that was passed in February of twenty twenty and it's never enacted. So now we're doing that.
Can they pull a report and say, okay, this address hasn't had service for five years and we start there?
Well, and maybe, and part of our issue, and I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, is our legal counsel has not been pushing what needs to be done on some of these properties. When they've been let go and that, and we've had ordinance violations, we've had all these different, cause this isn't new. These abandoned things and these, and these, these things have been around. But if we're not pushing them through, that lien needs to be reflected. When somebody sells the house, it doesn't have a tap. If it says that, if you're buying a house and it says it doesn't have a tap because of these reasons, that's a whole different world. But if I'm buying a piece of property that has water and sewer, it says so, then by golly, I expect that to be.
Well, I would think a home inspection would then.
Well, I.
Not necessarily, it's.
Don't speculate what a home inspection is gonna.
And you don't always think a home inspection.
And hey, and just on that, you know, so part of that, if there is a lien, that that's gonna show up in title, they wouldn't, they wouldn't know whether or not, you know, when you turn on your water or your electric, is that gonna work? They're not gonna know that. That would be, you know, kind of on the buyer's due diligence to figure that out and that can come up through the inspector, maybe or.
I don't look at no water tap. All I know is it's on or it's off. I don't.
You know, if, if utilities are on, then that's not a question. If utilities are off and then you say, and then you learn.
I don't get into a water bill, look at that.
If you learn, okay, this house has not had utilities for more than five, ten years, then they know that they need to, if they're doing due diligence, they need to maybe call the city, maybe do some more follow-up. But that's, that's part of that transaction. It's not gonna show up in, in title or anything.
Certain typical sales we're coming up to, every home I've ever bought, somebody's just moved out of it.
Well, exactly. These are not making a moving house.
None of the houses I've ever been in, I'm just doing that.
Different circumstances. So what, I guess to, to bring it back, cause I, I felt like I, I heard you say you're not against this.
Not totally against. I just wanna make sure that we're not running people off and, or, or hindering people who are trying, who, who buy a property that needs work. And if, you know, none of us, none of us are making a billion dollars down here in the valley. If it takes me three years to build it, to finish rebuilding a house, I shouldn't then be penalized with a ten thousand dollar tap fee.
I'm pretty sure if you're working on a house, you're probably gonna get that plumbing going so you can have some water running.
I've been, I've been working on a house for four years down the street. I don't have the utilities on currently because I don't need them currently. They were on at one point and then we turned them off because things were being done.
Typically when someone's remodeling, probably they're probably gonna look to get a pump.
If you have the money, yeah, but if you're not there every single month because it's fun, what would you rather do? Somebody working on something or it's just sitting? We have to make sure we don't make this a problem for people wanting to see. I understand we're gonna have to raise that fee and I understand there's gonna have to be something to be done. But there has to be some piece of that that says that it's our infrastructure as the city of Rocky Ford. And, and we need to be making, and if, and if that means we have to raise a rate somewhere to maintain it, then we obviously should have been doing that for fifty years. I don't wanna tax people. I don't wanna raise rates. I don't wanna do that. But if it costs to do this, we have to do that.
But the people that are coming in for investment properties, when they go to buy, like you said, it's gonna say it has all your sewer.
And if it says it has a tap, then it should have a tap.
There's, but just, there's, there's no document that's gonna say whether or not a property has a water, a water tap on it or not. You would, the only, the only way that you would learn that is if you, you're through your due diligence, you called the city and asked, hey, what is the status on this property? Then they were able.
I buy an empty lot.
I think I have better Realtors than you. My Realtor will go in there and they'll be like, oh yeah, this is when the subwick system was put in. This is when the wells are done.
Well, you're buying a lot nicer houses than I am.
Y'all have a lot of faith in your Realtor. Y'all have a lot of faith in your realtor.
Christ.
Sorry. Y'all are speaking, yeah, y'all are putting a hell of a lot of faith in something.
Yeah, I don't know what the hell.
Everyone, they just want to sell your house, sell you a house.
In the first one, you have our sign, that's what I do, our tap, it's a meter pit, that the meter is gonna go in. If there's a meter pit, then you know that one time there was a meter in there. And if you have to show a line, it's supposed to have a clean out. If there's a clean out thing, you know, there is a sewer line there.
There's a lot of houses around here that don't have sewer clean outs.
I have multiple, and two, some of them do anything.
Most, unless you put it in, don't have sewer, don't have sewer. We put one in and.
It's required.
Since we put it in.
It should be, what is it, it should be six inches of concrete. You know, yeah, it's, it's required, I have three. Two of them, two of them don't go anywhere.
All right, so on, on this, where, where are we at? I, I feel like I'm hearing that.
I feel like that's why I was like, can we get somewhere on this and then move to the next one, because I felt like we were accomplishing something. And then we got into the weeds.
And I think we did, so where, where are we at? I'll check, I, I, Nick, I, I think it's, you know, kind of looking to you.
Yeah, where you added the.
Yes, I like what you've got there, where we add in that other piece.
I can't even remember the line you said.
So it would be afterwards is for a period of one year, comma, we would say, or the dormant utility fee.
Unless paid.
As, uh.
Has not been paid for like a year.
Yeah. And I, I think that would be. That would work for, that's when we pull taps, when we pull meters.
So I guess, so we would have to, we would take out two, would I call it number two, the or. Property has not received water service for a period of one year, we would be taking that out and saying, or the dormant utility fee has not been. Paid for a period of one year?
Because they're obviously at that point not getting service.
Yeah.
So.
So the dormancy fee, what do you say is gonna water service?
And then, so I guess with that, are we? Yeah, so then, in that case, that would allow, that would allow them to pay dormant utility fee indefinitely and that's.
But once they stop, that one year starts that day, that point, and one year from that point, then we will pull the meter.
So it would be that coming out and then we would say. Or the dormant utility fee has not been paid for a period of one year. Then customer service shall be disconnected from the curb stop and the meter shall be removed by the city. If water service is not resumed within one year after disconnection of the water service for any reason, then the existing tap is deemed abandoned. The owner of said property must reapply for a new tap through the application process, application must be accomplished by funds for the size taps required.
I wonder if there's a way we can have chat G P T figure all this stuff out for us?
Well, and maybe. Maybe a clause could be added to the dormancy, and I know we just passed that, but. If we wanted to push that flush. Out on this, out on the, the property owner, that could be written into the dormancy fee that you need to schedule. A time for the city to turn that on and flush that. Every six months or something to, to keep tap in proper maintenance or something to that effect. Well, it would be the customer having to set up a schedule with us and, and yeah, you could probably throw, uh, whatever, a man hour or whatever takes. Fee on that.
So on that, a dormant utility fee that we would also say, you know, like a biannual flush is required.
A biannual flush, call us, set it up, we schedule it, we, you pay whatever. The man hour it takes to come turn the meter on, we flush it through your house, so we turn the meter back off, now we know our taps are being properly maintained. If they don't, if they don't comply with that, that they don't, I don't know.
If you, because if a house is winterized. So I, I, I've got half dozen houses here in town that are winterized and if the maintenance company. Was, if, if the maintenance company was paying the thirty dollar a month fee and they had somebody come out and flush the tap, they wouldn't want you to flush it through the whole house, because then they're gonna have to pay. Another service provider to come out and re-winterize that house twice a year.
Well, how would they even do that? They might be going inside the house.
Well, and they may not, but all I'm saying is that they, they can still just disconnect it right there at the meter.
There's the man ash right there.
Yep. But that would, that would put that on this, on the homeowner instead of on the city going up.
I feel like we're in the weeds.
And Rick.
Yes.
If we flush out that a tap that's not connected to, or is not being used twice a year, does it still go bad?
Sewer tap?
Water tap. Bull. Oh, bull.
I mean. It depends, I mean, the tap shouldn't go bad. I mean, we're connected to the, to the water man. There are instances where they do go bad.
So if they're shut off, what's the lifestyle of them?
It, it really just depends, I mean, there's all kinds of factors that influence it. If we shut it off and you guys come up with a. However many months and then it's a dormant, you know, we should recharge. If they come back in. Are, are we talking about somebody that owns it and leaves? Or are we talking about a property that. Has sat and somebody bought it new?
I think that's.
I think that's possibly two different things here, you know.
We're talking about it's been sitting there, somebody leaves it, but they're gonna come back eventually, but they're gonna pay the thirty dollar a month fee. And we're talking about them continuing to pay that thirty dollar a month fee indefinitely instead of pulling the meter and doing that. But requiring them to have it flushed twice a year. If we're doing that, is that. Plausible, is that feasible, or is that some, is that, or it needs to be flushed, I, I mean. Is flushing it gonna help maintain it is kind of where, that's what Nick's.
We were told by a belief Cucul that these, these taps wouldn't survive, once we pulled meters and cut them off, it wouldn't survive more than a year.
Yeah, the tap itself.
That's what we're being told, which is why, which is why we were wanting to add a, a tap fee because you haven't used it for multiple years. Now, I'm just trying to find a way to maintain them without totally tapping your recap something.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, don't believe them, it needs to be flushed, you turn them off, curb stop, it's turned off. He, he might have a different opinion on it. But yeah, I, I think if they're paying the dormant utility fee every month, then they should be able to tell when they come back.
I think that sort of answers.
I, I, my opinion anyway, I mean, if we're gonna implement that, now you guys wanna put a zero restriction on it. You can't be dormant for more than, you know, two years, whatever you guys decide.
Kind of what we just talked through is the way that it would read is, if a building has been razed or demolished and water service is abandoned. Or the dormant utility fee has not been paid for a period of one year, so that's number two, then. Service shall be disconnected from the curb stop and the meter shall be removed by the city. If water service is not resumed, resumed within one year after disconnection of the water service, then existing tap is deemed abandoned. So would that, would that work?
Remember that one, that one. That, that sounds very good right there. And we put restrictions on them and it's something they have to reply.
But once they stop paying that fee and stop paying attention, that clock starts and then we will start penalizing.
That sounds perfect.
Okay, so that's step one, are we okay there, or we can move to the next step?
And they, and they can pay for it.
Well, they would be going up a year, month, well, not diamond, uh, three, four, five, eight, year, they have a year and a reconnect after.
As long as they're paying that dormant fee and they sell the property.
But if they don't, he said if they don't, so.
Yeah. Then the next person wouldn't even have to pay a tap fee.
But if they stop paying it for a year, and that whole year.
Exactly, and that would help in selling property, that would help people talk to them.
So it's a two year thing there, yeah.
That would also be an incentive to help sell your property, saying, hey, the tap is here.
And I've been paying it.
Exactly, I've been paying the dormant fee, that's gonna be an incentive to help sell your property. All right, so that answers that.
Everyone's, everyone feels, feels good with the way this is.
I wish Rick had shown up thirty minutes ago.
I was gonna say, we could have gotten there thirty minutes ago.
We got the answer we needed.
All right, so we'll get, we'll get this one rewritten up, um, and. I think this one's ready to go, then the second part of the conversation that, that goes along with this one, but it's separate. Uh, resolution would be the, whatever the new water tap, water sewer tap piece would be.
Why did this resurface? Didn't we use coming back?
We've just passed it, I don't know why we had a new copy of it, or was it?
It's, it's still on the work, it's still on the work sessions.
Are we still, are we still discussing or here?
Are you, are you gonna, are you gonna peripresent, and that's kind of why that's still there, because it's. You're the one who wanted.
Okay, I knew there was something I needed to do and I knew it, you guys, I have so much.
If not, it's just kind of discussing what that looks like as far as implementation.
Got it.
Two minutes ago.
No. I just want to change that word. I want to change the word or to and. That is the only thing I want to do, is change one word, does somebody have this already typed up, or I have to type the whole thing up?
No, it's.
Are you talking about number longer or four?
Yes. I just want it changed to and.
Okay, can it be and slash or?
No. No.
Okay, now I'm just gonna do this, but I'll.
Unoccupied, for and unsecured, and then all the other things.
What is that?
No, or is bad, or is bad.
All right, so you can type this.
I don't want to type the whole thing.
We have, we have it, we have it.
Rebecca?
Which one are you, it's in your email.
You said editable?
I'm sure it's in your document.
Okay, I'll find it, yes. I want to.
Make it build.
And you just want to do the one in there.
Yes, yes, those are the two changes we want to make, okay. I will get it, I will find it and I will make those changes and I will bring it back. I thought it was two, but I couldn't remember what I was supposed to be doing.
All right, both of the two things, I'm, I'm.
Hey, I got it.
You have to bring that.
And what, dinner next time? Oh, don't take. Don't take this.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like the thing we left earlier, so. That doesn't go home with us. Yes. Um, what about the one for legal services, does that one need, that's public? That's a. Okay, Nicole is going to change this to.
Okay, guys, Nicole and I is to be home by eight thirty.
No, eight. Eight oh one.
I think those four, those four orders, I'd give you forty-five minutes.
Strike them.
We can add eight, I'm buying a lot of tickets.
Everybody, quickly, quickly.
I like my ride though. That's why it's not that, I don't.
Can we go home while it's not dark?
Can't we just put everything, I think, say the gender?
I was gonna ride my son's scooter and then.
Oh, I guess we gotta let June talk though, she isn't.
She's making quicks.
All the points.
Just send me an email about five.
There's food back there, did you get a snack?
Do they have pitchers? Because I like pitchers, I like pitchers.
If anybody's hungry, there is pizza back there, help yourself.
I'll get my crabs out.
I need one of those.
Hold on, I got a flyer on my truck.
For what?
Our library.
Are you saying it'll give you more over?
What was Nick doing?
Ah. I don't want to walk home. That's okay, I can call your mother-in-law now, she has a car, oh no, she can't drive it. My mom, she has. It's only six hours, I could walk it. I can probably talk her into it too, she drives right by the house too.
I don't care, I think you're the one else dealing with, with the, the billing.
I know where they bought it from. That's shocking.
That was a different one, I spoke to you about.
That one's right.
All right. Time is now seven oh one, I'll call the regular meeting of the Rocky Ford City to order Rebecca, do our rule call, please.
Montano.
Here.
Barone.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Mostby.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Mullins.
Here.
And Mayor Bulewski.
Here. You'll all rise, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thomas, will you do our mission statement, please?
Absolutely. The mission of Rocky Ford is to improve the quality of life in the city of Rocky Ford, making it a great place to live and work while strengthening relationships and creating pride in the community.
All right, we'll move on to our first public comment, anyone would like to address counsel on any items not on the agenda, please come up to the front. Okay, I'll move on to our consent agenda, uh, consent agenda includes the approval of previous meeting minutes for February twenty fifth. Uh, and a request to close Public Street for a special event. Uh, by Zach Hartner, D B A General Wright Art Gallery, nine fifteen Maple Avenue, Rocky Ford. For an art gallery opening event and art festival on Saturday, March twenty ninth from eight M to seven P M. Street will be closed from Maple Avenue, on Maple Avenue from Main Street to Ninth Street. Anyone like to discuss those in the regular agenda, if not, look for motion approval under consent agenda.
I motion. Make motion to the room.
I second it.
We have a motion, motion from Montano, second from Mullins.
To approve?
Yes. Hold the vote.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mostby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Mayor Bulewski.
Yes. We made a consent agenda as approved. Um, as well as all items on there. Before we go, I, I do see Zach here with this this evening, um, so we did, uh, get, receive that, uh, special request for. The event, the street closure, um, and that was approved on consent agenda, so, yeah, come on up. Yeah, maybe if you want to, you can just share.
Uh, good evening, everybody. So, uh, I've been very grateful to be part of this community for a couple of years now and, um. Work really closely with, uh, some of the first responders here, with some of the charities that go on here and, um, I'm always looking for ways to better our community. Um, I love being a part of it, so. I decided, I'm part of a very large, um, art community and, um. I always try and help them as well and this just seemed like a way that I could, uh, open up some culture to our community. Um, while helping my artist friends and, um. Hopefully, if the festival goes well, it's something that maybe we can continue. But I'm always looking for the betterment, so I appreciate you guys approving that.
Awesome, well, thanks for your efforts.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're interested, there is a flea market this weekend as well as at the end of, uh, April.
Um, I'll think about that. I, I've, I've literally pulled like three days straight, uh, to meet deadlines on this gallery and had to put. Chainsaw carving to the side, which now I'm behind on, so. I'll think about it.
You're always welcome anytime we've got anything going on over there.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Zach, thank you, and again, just for anyone listening, and I'm sure you, you all be sharing some information, but it'll be. Um, art gallery opening event and art fest. art gallery opening event and art festival on Saturday, March twenty-ninth from eight AM to seven PM here in Rocky Ford. I don't have any additions or changes to the agenda. So look for motion to approve agenda.
Motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mostby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Mayor Gurely.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to our staff report. Stacy, will you kick us off with the city manager report?
Seven oh one Sycamore demo was supposed to start yesterday. They moved the equipment in. Had some issues getting the, the roll-offs there, but they did start today. They got a, a large chunk removed. No other updates on the other properties. Get higher or select Matt Wallace as our new police chief. Want to thank the committee, the search committee for the work and the time that they put into helping that decision there. We had a SIRS audit on February the twenty-seventh. They identified thirty-seven recommendations for consideration to decrease loss control. They did an audit in August of twenty-four, and there was forty recommendations, so I, I felt that we're improving there. Big issue that we're having is the playgrounds, especially Play Park Hill, that place that was put in, probably, I think it was in ninety-five. So it's past its useful life expectancy, so we need to look at removing that and installing a new one pretty quick here. The slide, the pieces of the slide keep breaking, and we, we tried to repair it and didn't. So want to say, and all the playgrounds need the engineered wood fiber, which, which we are aware of, and have to say, Kuko has taken action on what can be done. The city's doing it immediately. We have to write a written response and outline the maintenance plans so we can earn credit on our loss control standards. Tennis courts, I received a notice from the state of Colorado, the Land and Water Conservation Fund. They come every five years and they do an inspection. That project was funded by the Land and Water Conservation Fund, so we have to keep those projects going at all times. And we've, we've been lacking in that. So they've asked for a written plan to get the tennis courts up to, up to standards, so it's perpetual care. I did ask if we could modify the, the tennis courts up there to, for more pickleball courts to better suit the needs of the community. They told me yes, and when I was mentioning it to Kuko, he said that they may be needing that space for another tower, for communications for the water tanks. So at that point, I reached out to the state and I asked if it was possible to change locations of, of this park, and they said it can be done. It's just a lot of paperwork on our end, but it could be done. And considering if, if we can work an agreement out with the school, moving the tennis courts, pickleball courts would make better sense to put it library and Jefferson area as a possibility, so. And I do have, his name's Connor Bebe from Protrack in Tennessee, coming on Thursday to give us a court, uh, an estimate to see what the courts would cost to resurface, just, just so we have a number. Did talk to the railroad on Friday. They came in, they were knocking on the door. It was just, just by luck, I was walking by. They're going to be working on the crossings. They asked for assistance in closing the roads while the work is being done. I did call Rick and Kuko over for this conversation, and then we discussed the pedestrian crossway. And they are going to start putting those back in. He said priority is going to be Ninth Street and then Main Street. So that was good news. He did comment that Mr. Barone had been on them. We're all spread away with bond council. I thought we were snow. They've been working with the Colorado Water Resource. And so that goes before their board on, in April, and once that's approved on their board, we're, we're good to go on there. The sidewalks and ABA ramps at library are nearly complete. We'll be moving to Babcock. We are on the schedule for precision concrete for the shaving, but no date has been set yet. Street signs, made contact with them. They did send back what the street signs were, and so I sent that to, to Mayor and Rick and Kuko, and we're already identifying that they didn't get all of the street names in there, one of them being Swain. Couple of them like Lincoln Street and Lincoln Avenue, so we're, we're going to comb through that and make sure it's right when we go to order. Department updates, the, this was on the last report, but upcoming will be the IGA with the Rural Fire Protection District. That's for a two-year renewal. They did help with cleaning up at Crystal Lake, and they also did some training there. They did quite a bit of work on Saturday. So thank them for that. The police department, they're keeping up with their weekly activity summary, and those numbers remain consistent. Public Works, we did reach out to Colorado Bearcay on Street Signs, and there was no change in cost from the book that we got in November, so that was good news. They had several water main breaks, sewer line replacement in the alley west of Sonic. They had a, was that today? Your sewer audit was today?
Sanitary survey today.
So they assess the conditions, operations, and maintenance of the public water system. Water regulations identify some potential risks to public health. Audits every three to five years, and our last audit was in twenty-two. They helped remove trees for property craft at the Sycamore site. Rocky Ford Parks and Rec were continuing with the Lego Drive, with Tom and Jen, or their donations of, of Legos, and also Mia in the front office. Adult volleyball started last week, and we ended up with twenty-two teams between the two nights. And men's softball will start on Friday. We got four teams there, and high school baseball started, so. Parks group have been getting the field ready to go there. Water should come in, in the cat line this week. So, so once the golf course gets their system up and going, we'll be able to start watering. Rocky Ford Library has published a monthly activity event schedule, which is nice to see. And Limp Copy is there on select dates, so you can get copy near the library, which is awesome. Rocky Ford Museum, Tom's taken on a project at the museum to catalog every artifact through a program called Cataloget. He's going to talk more about it. It's a powerful tool for efficiency, efficiently managing and showcasing artifacts and collections. It's not on the report, but I did start a, if you got caught, Robert Barone came in and, and wanted me to know that he caught one of our parks' guys going above and beyond, and he wanted him recognized, and so I thought it was a nice gesture to publicly put him out there, and, and he was so appreciative. Absolutely.
Got a lot of good employees. Let's acknowledge you.
So I, I, I challenge to, to keep this up. Positive things.
Appreciate it. A couple of questions, just so the public would know, we have a new police chief. He should be officially on duty.
So we have some statutory regulations that we have to follow, background, consent for background check, which has been sent in, and then he'll have to do a physical and psychological testing. That's a twenty-one day process, so we're looking at least April the seventh, if not the fourteenth.
So for the public, April seventh, new chief. And this one I'm going to throw out, I don't know, it's probably going to be with the school board and then the lifetime expectancy, but the old Liberty Washington schools, the playgrounds there, some of that stuff's not that old. It doesn't look at her that old. Can we give the school to, that's all being far down, correct?
It, my understanding, the playground equipment is going to stay unless they feel that it's, it's past its life expectancy, then some of that stuff will be removed, but most of the playgrounds.
Some of it's still pretty nice condition, yeah, but they're going to keep it.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it, okay.
Any other questions for Stacy here? All right, thank you for, for as always. All right, we'll move on to June and our communications report. This will be our end of year report for the twenty twenty-four year.
Hello, everybody. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Jim, Communications Director. In other words, your nine-one-one for Pittsburgh. And I brought some handouts for you. You don't mind?
Yep.
I'm going to give you each a flyer as well. We are going into bad weather, could be tornadoes, heavy winds, those kinds of things. Also, so I'm, we're trying to push people to get signed up for Code Red. It's like a reverse nine-one-one system, and if we can get out notifications to people, it's also good for if there is any kind of disaster, right, or if there's any kind of safety issue for the public, if we have police activity in your area. We can send you out a message to, you know, stay in place or avoid certain areas if there is a fire. We can let you know, because a lot of times people are a little bit excited, there will be a lot of smoke and fire, or we can let you know that, yeah, we know about it, and you just please stay away. Okay, so we're just going to, I go over real quickly, kind of some totals that we had for twenty twenty-four. The top page that you have there tells you that we answered four thousand three hundred and twenty-four nine-one-one calls last year. And we did that in four seconds or less, most of them. The national standards or the industry standards are ten seconds. So we should be at ten seconds at least eighty percent of the time and fifteen seconds ninety percent of the time. And we are, our average is four seconds. So we're, we're hitting that right on there. The second page gives you those totals. So we are at ninety-seven point five percent under ten seconds, which is the, the highest level that we should strive to get. And so we hit that, under that, ninety-seven percent of the time. There is a number there of calls that were not answered, and the reason for that is sometimes they're abandoned. We have three hundred calls that are abandoned, and that's when people call nine-one-one and they're like, oops, didn't mean to do that, and they just hang up. Okay, and then we usually spend time calling them back and trying to figure out why. And there's also times when we have an accident or a fire, and then everybody in the area tries to call nine-one-one to let us know, and there's just no way that we can answer every single one of those calls sometimes, and they will roll over to another nine-one-one center. They don't just not get answered. It does eventually get answered, but sometimes we cannot answer every single one, and that doesn't happen very often. On the next page, I gave you a kind of a five-year breakdown of all of the agencies that we dispatch for and as well as other calls that we take care of. And our five-year trend, so in five years, our calls have increased by over fifty percent and seventeen percent over last year. That number is probably going to be quite a bit higher this year because we did take on another agency. We started with Kiowa at the beginning of the year, and that's going very well. We're all getting settled in, and it's been interesting. They have a so it's a different area than we have here, so the calls are a little bit different. I don't know if you guys have watched any of the news, but there's been a lot of semi-rollovers in Kiowa County with the high winds and, and such, so it's, it's been interesting. You'll notice that there's some agencies on here like Colorado State. That's the DFPC. So it is the state fire engine that is stationed in La Jolla. And sometimes they get hop on our radio and we communicate with them when they're helping out our fire department. And they're available to the entire area. The Rocky Ford Emergency Communications is when dispatch is just taking care of calls and we don't have to give that out to an agency. And then, of course, we have the fire departments. They all stay pretty, pretty stable, and at the very bottom of your list, you're going to see Rocky Ford Public Works. So we do handle a lot of calls for Public Works, especially on weekends and after hours. And we started tracking those, and as you can see, those are getting, they went up quite significantly in the last five years. Yep, that one a day on average.
Yes.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah, we've become good friends, yeah. And then the police department, you'll see down there, their numbers have increased significantly in the last year and a half. I would attribute that to code enforcement has been very active, okay, and that is under the, under the police department as well as the number of officers that we have, right, because we were down to two officers for a while, and with the increase in staff, they're being much more proactive, they're able to get out there more, so those numbers have increased.
So when you say police department includes code enforcement, that means people calling into dispatch, talking about
Yeah, this is dispatch.
Reporting a code violation?
Also, we dispatch code enforcement, so when he goes out to a property, he will call in, just like an officer does.
Oh, okay.
And say, hey, dispatch, show me out at this property for whatever reason, and then he'll give us kind of a disposition on that and let us know what we need to put in the notes, that kind of thing. If somebody calls in for a code violation, that's also another reason, right? So loose dogs, it's a very popular topic. Right? Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, because he does also handle the dog, the canine population as well.
All of these calls you take are just nine-one-one or is it nine-one-one and non-emergency?
So all of these calls are nine-one-one and non-emergency. The first page, the four thousand three hundred calls, is that's the nine-one-one calls that we take. Well, we had a total of thirty-five thousand calls that we handled last year.
And only four thousand.
Just shy, just shy of a hundred calls a day.
How many people do you have on staff over there now?
Not enough. So we try to keep two people during most hours, but our budget really just does not allow us two people all the time, which is actually standard. We should have a minimum of two people at all times because we also do EMD, which is emergency medical dispatch. And along with that, you really can't get away from that call. If you're coaching somebody through CPR, you can't take that dog call, okay? You can't take that, whatever other call that's coming in, they have to wait. We do have a voicemail on our non-emergent line, so please, if anybody does call us and they get that voicemail, leave a message. Because what happens is that voicemail automatically goes to an email that sits right in front of us. And we just open that, that, open up that message, it'll play for us, and we can call you right back. And that's for the non-emergent line. Nine-one-ones, again, they will get answered. If not by us, it'll roll over to the next nine-one-one center, which is La Jolla or Crowley County. We do answer a lot of Crowley County calls, too, by the way, just because of the way the valley sits. Everything in Crowley and Alney Springs, most of those calls come to us because they hit the tower in Manzanola. So those calls typically will come to us, and then we generally transfer them over to Crowley County. There for, I think it was a couple of months towards the end of the year, we actually had to do a little bit more than that because their nine-one-one system was down completely, was not working. So we did help them out by taking those calls and information and then calling them on their non-emergent line and giving them the information. Anybody questions? We also have texting. I want to get that out there every time because people, we don't, we don't use it very much because I think nobody really thinks to use it. But what is really important, if any of you know somebody who doesn't speak English well, they can text us, and our texting service automatically translates. So, and it translates in most all languages, so no matter what message you text to us, it will translate to us in English. We type in English, but then it translates it back to you in your language. So it's very seamless. It's So it's very seamless, um, it's worked very well. We had one citizen, um, that used, used it quite often just to talk to us. You don't have to, our non-emergent line, you can text to our non-emergent line as well, which a lot of people do not know. So if you don't have a pressing emergency and we're not answering, you can text this as well. That will go right through. So we have that capability.
If that wouldn't really help if you have somebody that's non-verbal or, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Can you just text nine one one?
Yes.
What's your non-emergent line? Is that the three, three?
Three, three, four, four. Yep. Yep, so seven, one, nine, two, five, four, three, three, four, four is our non-emergent line. And we are text capable on that phone line as well.
Good to know.
Okay? Um, and then the flyer that I brought for you guys, Code Red. Um, again, this is a really important program for our citizens to get signed up on that.
I know, I really enjoy it.
Right? Get signed up on that. We are holding an event at the Public Safety Building on March twenty-sixth. We'll be in the main lobby to help anybody sign up if they don't understand, um, how to do it or if they just want us to help. Um, we will be there to help everybody sign up, answering questions that you may have. Um, we also have a customer service number that was given to us by Code Red because it was expressed to us that a couple of citizens were unhappy with the system because it wasn't working properly for them. And we reached out to, um, On Solve, which is the company that, um, has Code Red. And they stated that if you've been on it for a very long time, sometimes it needs to be adjusted. Your settings need to be adjusted and they will be happy to help you do that. So if you find that you have not gotten a, uh, notification in a timely manner, we can call On Solve and see if we can't get that fixed for you.
On twenty-sixth of March, you'll be, people can go down there.
To the Public Safety Building and we will be there to help you sign up. Um, it is from ten to two. We did a sign up for Kiowa County on the seventeenth of February. We had two dispatchers go out to Kiowa County to the senior center and help the seniors get signed up for Code Red. We're, uh, we'll have a second one on March seventeenth. We're gonna send somebody out to help again, um, to help that community because now they're on our system, which, so they had to change. Their system had to change. So we sent out people to help get their citizens changed over. Um, we will be at the library this Friday, on the fourteenth. We've got the Code Red sign up. Telecommunicator Week is coming up, the second week of April. Um, it's just a chance for us, just like, uh, First Responder Week or, you know, EMS Week. We use that week to celebrate our employees and treat them special.
That was April.
It's the second week of April, yes, the thirteenth through the nineteenth. And then we will also be participating in the Safety Jam in La Jolla in June. It's gonna be the Second Annual Safety Jam. If you haven't been there, go, it's so much fun. They gave away, oh, it was hundreds of bicycles and helmets and, um, AMR is the sponsor there. And all, it's, a lot of first responders, uh, will be there. La Jolla Fire, uh, Rocky Fire, PD. And we'll be out there to join them as well.
That's the one at the city park?
It's the one at the city park, yep, Safety Jam. And it'll be on June twenty-eighth in the city park in La Jolla.
Is your sign up just for people in Ontario County?
No, actually, I do believe Crowley County uses Code Red as well. So when you sign up, you sign up for your, with your zip code or with your address. And it'll have that area. Also too, I believe, if you travel, you can set up your notifications so that if you travel and you go into an area that a notification is being sent out, you will get that.
You can have multiple locations too.
Yeah. And you can choose to get them text, phone call, email, um, several different, several different ways.
I need to change my, cause I get them all. So I get a focal and a text, same thing.
Are there any, like, follow-up shelters or any work?
You know, that is, that is something that we were actually talking about. Um, we had a director's meeting and we talked about a co-op plan and an emergency, you know, what do we do? Kind of thing, and that is something that we are currently working on.
That's, I'm gonna go back a little bit.
Yeah, right? Well, an emergency shelter, right? Because we have people that are unhoused. And what do they do? Right, what do they do? So we are, we are working on, um, co-op plans for the city. I'll let you guys, we'll update you as we get that, for safety reasons. Any more questions?
Thank you very much for everybody on the phone, thank you.
I will.
Just thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our council reports, and we'll start with Councilman Martinez.
All right. Keep it short, we went to Crystal Lake. Uh, we've been out there twice. We had one day it was just people picking up firewood, the next week, Saturday, I think, we were out there cleaning up, we were raking the forest. You know what, we, we, uh, what was there, maybe a dozen of us out there, but I think we made huge impact. And then with the fire guys out there, it's, it's kinda looked amazing. I can't wait to see what it looks like when it's all said and done. Uh, so thank you to everybody that was out for that. I still wanna picture you in that tree. You need to not get out of the tree so fast next time. Uh, but, and then we had our, uh, our library board meeting. So we have, they did put out the calendar. It's, it's fun, it's to see some of the things we're doing. We've got, you know, Bloom Coffee's down there, Small Town Project has their after-school program. They've got some bingo stuff during spring break or week after spring break, sorry, I can't read that. I will be giving this to Rebecca to post out here. And then they have Thursday, March twentieth, Bensel Fort presents, uh, Buffalo Robes to Beads at our library here. So you'd be trading fur for beads and making, uh, necklaces, learning sign language to trade. I, the adults do it, I didn't realize they had two separate programs, actually adult program that does this. And it's pretty well attended, people think it's sponsored, so get your kids out there, it's a program for children of all ages. So whether you're six or forty-six, we're, we're all still children sometimes.
But you bet you can't get into state for the after-school program.
Well, they'll be there, wow, yeah, ten to one, but I think that's over spring break, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Seventeenth to twentieth is spring break. And then Shree Board, we haven't had a meeting, but we will be gearing up for our seed swap, plant sale thing, I, I, sometime around Mother's Day, I presume, as usual. And that's all I got, it's, I didn't do a whole lot of stuff this week, I was busy cleaning them all properly. So.
Fireside?
Yeah, Fireside Chat was last night, Gary attended, his kids were there, my kid was there, we had some good discussion. Thank you for coming, Mr. Reed. Uh, I welcome anybody else, we do it, uh, second Monday, right before a council meeting. So the next one will be April fourteenth, will be the next Fireside Chat. So the next one will be in April, you know, maybe there'll be food, we'll see, no guarantees.
Is there any firewood you picked up at the lake?
Oh, that's, I'm sure there's still plenty out there.
So, citizens, you want firewood?
Get ahold of somebody, it's like, you know, most of the time, we'll be out there again.
Yeah, they'll have to coordinate because the, the area, I guess.
Oh, okay, all right.
But if you need firewood, I'll be bringing down some trees at my house, I can get it too.
That's what it takes to get rid of it.
Okay. That's it for you, then. All right, the Friends of the Grant at the Grant Theater, this month, there's no meeting. Uh, next month, we will be meeting on, uh, the seventeenth at the theater, six P M. That's the third, third thing of each month we have meetings. Uh, you can help support the grant by attending shows, you can buy snacks, not only to eat there, but also to take out. Put in bids on the old posters, buy you some old movie posters. You can buy advertising on that largest screen in, between Budlow and Kansas, it's the largest screen, people. You wanna see a movie, right there in front of you, a big old, bigger than life size, that, this place to go, Rocky Ford. You can also rent the building out for whatever means, not just movies. You can, uh, show personal showings of either a movie you wanna pull off the list or something you might have. Uh, you can volunteer your time or services that, that the grant, you can help, help out any which way you can over there. Uh, currently, they're cleaning, the seats have been cleaned, the carpets are being cleaned, it's all been done by Mr. Dees. Uh, last week, we were showing, they showed Antietam in Peru, wasn't a very good turnout. Less than a hundred for all three shows, I think it's showing again this weekend. Weekend after next, they'll be showing Snow White, not the original one, I'm not sure what, that'd be in two weeks, it'll be Snow White. Uh, people, the American Legion has asked me to reach out because they need volunteers. They're all growing old and not as healthy as they used to be, but they need help setting up flags on, on various holidays. So they've asked if I can do shout-out for them, just putting up flags, taking them down, set up around six, uh, eight A M., take them down around five P M. Maybe an hour each time. You can get ahold of, uh, Rod Rodriguez at seven, one, nine, nine, six, seven, three, 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 six. He's, uh, the American Legion leader chair in Rocky Ford. Uh, you can also, Robert, what was the last word? The last word digits are three, 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 six. And please, people, help out, it's, uh, I think the next holiday we're gonna have is Memorial Day, I think it's gonna be in, uh, May, May the twentieth, I think, or May twenty-fifth or something. So, uh, please help out with the bets and just honor nation's holidays. Uh, you can also, with the bets, you can just, you know, every Tuesday, they're having coffee meeting for each other where they can meet for support and talk about various services available to them, they meet every Tuesday at ten A M. Aaron Rocky Ford at the coffee shop, the address is two oh nine North Main Street, so please, uh, if you're a vet, wanna go there? Uh, or if you're, have to be in and out of there, go in there, buy them a cup of coffee, show them your appreciation for anything they've done for us, for this country. Or just tell them how long, thank you for their service. Also, they're gonna be, the American Legion here in Rocky Ford is gonna be partnering up with the one out of, uh, Ordway, Crowley County. June fourteenth, they're having a big, uh, event at the Fairgrounds over there, they're gonna have, uh, hope it's everybody for the public not. The bets, but there'll be a lot of, uh, people there to help this for various services and stuff that are available, or maybe used to be available. But, uh, that's on June the fourteenth in Ordway at the Fairgrounds. I'd like to do a shout-out to Black Hills Energy, I noticed here in Rocky Ford, they've been going around trimming all the trees, they hired a contractor out of Budlow. They get all these trees done, they're doing a very good job for the power line warning signs with your cones, I've spoken to those guys there at the worst times and, uh, you see them, let them know, thank you, appreciate what they're doing. Uh, shout-out to Mr. Mullins, Councilmember Mullins, and also the net, been helping him out at, at the museum. As it was brought up, like, they're changing everything over to the new digital or whatever, I'm not sure the proper terminology. To me, it's all, they're going old school categories, romantic, to the new school digital or whatever, the net helped with a lot of stuff, the photographs. So thank you both, a lot of work, uh, Tom gave me a little private tour on a, on a Sunday. And, uh, I was amazed, that was the first time I've ever been in there, born up in Rocky Ford, great La Jolla, but there's a lot of stuff in there. And Mike, he took me down memory row with the, the photographs, the, the movie posters, the movies that have been filmed there in La Jolla. Mr. Mullins actually asked me how old I was when I come, I remember they were filming, watching them as a child during La Jolla, filming these movies, Mr. Majestic and, uh, Centennial and, uh, Patnats now. So, uh, but thank you for everything you're doing there. And people go there, I, I was amazed of what was in there, the, uh, the, uh, the fossils and everything from, from outside, but just around here, the Indian stuff. Lot of history, go on there, you have some time, take a tour. Uh, everybody that was involved with the Crystal Lake cleanup, thank you all, I wasn't able to, uh, go up to help you on that one, maybe next time we're out. But, uh, that's about it for me, oh, no, one more. My shout-out to a local business here in Rocky Ford, I'm picking on this week. Custom embroidery, screen printing, decals, signs and more. It's the T-shirt Palace at four hundred North Main Street, Aaron Rocky Ford. Their phone number, seven, one, nine, two, five, four, three, seven, six, six. They're open Monday through Thursday from eight to noon and then twelve thirty to five. On Fridays, they're open from eight to two. Now, if you, uh, go in there and you do, uh, make some purchases, they will offer discounts, you get a twenty percent discount off for military, active military, for vets and first responders. And they also give discounts for, uh, quantity discounts. If you get fifty or more items, or fifty to seventy-four, twenty percent off, seventy-five to ninety-nine items, twenty-five percent off, a hundred plus items per order, you get thirty percent off your order. So please help the, the local communities. Uh, they, they did say Rocky Ford gives them a lot of business here, maybe with the city, we'll give more to you. Our section, right? But, uh, it just, uh, yeah, it's, it's local, keep, try and keep the, uh, business local, the money local, they appreciate it. Uh, helps our tax base. And also the most important one here, Colorado Crisis Services, free confidential, twenty-four seven support. It, uh, you can call one, eight, four, 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 nine, three, eight, two, five, five, or text, talk, two, three, eight, two, five, five. It's a crisis hotline for whatever, suicide or just anything, any kind of crisis you might be in, need somebody to talk to or if you know somebody that you think might need help, call us and maybe they can give you information on how to do it. So please, watch out for each other, take care of each other. Thank you, Rocky Ford, for all you do.
Thank you.
The only thing I might have. Anyway, um, the only thing I might have to bring is, uh, Kuko, were you able to get any more information on what we had spoke about, about the curb and gutters? Are we still gonna do that or no?
Yeah, um, so what I'm looking at doing, or what we are looking at doing is, uh, offering to pick up piles. Uh, we haven't got a chance to put that, or advertise it out, but, uh, if the citizens clean their dirt, pile them up, we will come out and pick up those piles so that it, it takes some less strain on us having to clean every curb and gutter in the city. Um, we, we offer that as, and to the citizens the possibility to clean their curb and gutter. Will people like to offer, if you clean it, they will hop up with some form things, we will pick up the piles.
Do they have to bag it for bags?
We're just, I mean, if you could just put it in the pile.
That stuff is so heavy.
Um, if there is, if it's being bagged, we can just leave all the, we sell like that too.
Yeah, but that's not mostly leaves, I did, uh, on spruce from six to seven last weekend or two weekends ago. And I, it was so heavy. There's, I mean, I had to use probably three dozen bags to fill that and not have them break on everything. I mean, it was so much dirt and heavy, heavy. Yeah, so.
Our manpower is pretty low, you know, we, uh, it'll hop out, we'll work with the citizens. I mean, we're together, we could clean up everything, you know, we could clean up a lot. And that's something we like to, we do it with the branch, we do it with the lead. We had a call today about some branches that need to be picked up, you know, we'll send the guys out tomorrow to pick them up. It'll hop us a lot, right now, we're in preparation. Summer's coming, we just starting to grow, we, grass, preparing the harvest, uh, so many tools. Anything's ready before, think of the pile, you know, we, we, it'll hop us out a lot, if there's a curb and gutter within the pile, we can get it. Call in, we'll put in the work order and we'll get it done.
And just, just on that topic, do we have a limb pile that citizens can take their own stuff to, to help you guys?
Not right now.
Not right now?
That was after that one big storm.
Well, I know we had, I just didn't know if we had one the other way.
So with that, right now, if, if someone does have any, can they call in?
We, we would be, we're, we're happy to help.
Okay.
Cause with that wind, I mean, there's been a lot down. I've got a nice pile, I'll call you guys.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I don't have any updates.
Thank you.
Uh, Chamber, working on membership drive, it's that time of year. Our next meeting is next Thursday, the twentieth. We do currently have a full board again. Events coming up, we've got our flea market coming up this weekend on Saturday, the fifteenth. Other one on April twenty-sixth, spaces for that are twenty-five dollars for a ten by ten, forty dollars for a ten by twenty. If you wanna sign up for both weeks, I'll, uh, give you a discount. Still got plenty of space available too, uh, if you don't got anything going on those two weekends. Still got plenty of space available too, uh, if you don't got anything going on those two weekends, come by shop, um, I've got. Not this weekend, but the one in April will have five, uh, young entrepreneur group, uh, group selling stuff. Um, that are working with Mackenzie King from the Young America Group.
Youth Biz.
Or Youth Biz, so, um, come out and support those, uh, young entrepreneurs that have been working really hard this school year, uh, trying to get that stuff going. Um. Other things coming up, uh, of course, this year we are celebrating our eightieth anniversary as a chamber. Um, we've been incorporated since nineteen forty-five with the state of Colorado as a Chamber of Commerce. Um, hopefully, we're trying to get together a gala banquet event for that, coming up here soon, we'd like to get some. Upcoming work completed at the Govan Building before we, uh, open that up and let everybody come in and check it out, but we've got some bathroom remodeling and. Uh, security upgrades getting ready to take place over there that have been approved. Um, events, we will have again our flea market, uh, Easter brunch will follow the, uh, police department's Easter egg hunt. We'll do that after that, and then we'll have another small Easter egg hunt as well on April nineteenth. Uh, we'll have our grownups who love us luncheon, that'll fall, I wanna say the week after Memorial Day weekend this year. Um, not necessarily a chamber event, but cruising into summer will be on June seventh this year. Uh, the first meeting for that is coming up this, this next week, so, um, that's getting ready to happen, Fourth of July. Duck race, uh, that'll happen just like usual, hopefully Freedom Fest is bigger and better than it was last year. So I'm starting to ramp up, getting ready for that kind of stuff. Had quite a few, uh, memberships sent in and stuff like that, so it's nice to have those rolling in and having that support, so thank you, Rocky Ford and business citizens. I think that's all I have.
I think.
Okay, I'll be quick, um. The only thing I've been working on, um, is that database, uh. And, and unfortunately for the public, it's, it's maybe difficult to get excited about, um. What's happening right now, because we're just taking papers and cards that are old. And we're putting them into a digital system, but the second stage of this process, it can be photographing everything. And linking all the history that's in the museum to make it accessible to everyone over the internet. Um, this is really important, we get a lot of people calling, um, from outside of the state even. That want to know about their relative that used to live here, um, a lot of our donations come from out of state even. Um, so we want to provide that service to our students here, our citizens, and then also the larger community. Um, this is a huge project, uh. Right now, just the documents alone. At, at least six thousand documents that are being scanned and entered and typed and. Then we're entering valuations and for everything and a bunch of boring backend stuff, um, everyone who sees this though is excited about it. Um, if you'd like to come and take a look at it before it's public, you can, uh, right now, we're not prepared to public, cause there's. Confidential information, and they're like donor addresses and phone numbers and such, that's, that's gonna be coming. Um, but we need volunteers, um, anybody interested in working at the museum. We have essentially unlimited amount of work for you. Um, and anybody can do it, if you can, if you can operate email, you're qualified, um, that's about as complicated as it gets. Um, or if you're good with a camera, um, as Ms. Mosby has, uh, showed us, uh. She's, she's a very talented photographer and her, and her husband Chuck, and we're so delighted to have them helping us with this, because. That's really gonna up the value to the public when, when it comes out. Don't forget to spray a nudeer pets.
We need that reminder. Uh, the O P O P I Board, uh, over at County Courthouse coming up on the seventeenth. Uh, pension board will also be meeting in the upcoming week, um, just, uh, some updates from the swimming pool, they'll be, they're starting their. Prepping plan for the twenty twenty-five season, uh, one of the things that they're gonna be working on is, um. Replacing the grass patches and the turf patch that are inside the swimming pool, um, so they're gonna be just putting concrete there. Um, so they have, uh, some quotes there and, um, I think between the, the friends of the pool and then, um, what's in our pool budget, they'll be taking care of that. Cleanups at Crystal Lake, so, so we had those, um, those were really more focused around, um, just clearing up more of the, the brush and the down limbs, um. But, uh, get a lot up there, so thank you, thank everyone who was, was in there. Um, and I think even for, um, a lot of people that were able to load up some wood and they'll be able to reuse that in different ways, so that's always great to. See those, uh, go in those cycles. We, uh, the city applied for, um, uh, EPA Thriving Communities Grant for assessment and cleanup. Of some of the burned down properties, um, so we did receive notification that that was denied. Um, however, we did, uh. Set up a meeting for a grant re- review, um, for feedback, so we met with them, um, received some feedback, I think some pretty constructive feedback. Um, didn't seem like we were too off base, um, so we're gonna be, uh, getting that resubmitted before the March thirty-first deadline, they had a, a second round. Um, just with some of the things happening on the federal level, um, this was a. EPA Thriving Communities Grant, which is focused on, um, disadvantaged, underserved communities, um, it is equity focused, so there was some scrutiny on it. Um, however, with some of the, um. I guess some of the, the lawsuits against it, um, it seems like they're just, they're gonna work to, uh. Expedia these rounds, um, so this, uh, second one's gonna be coming up at the end of this month, we're gonna get that submitted and. Fingers crossed on that, but we'll be sure to provide any updates there. That's all I have. Good. All right, we'll move on to our old business, um, we have, uh, four ordinances on second reading, second and final reading. Um, so just the first one to, to start. We have ordinance number nine eighty-five, an ordinance amending. Section seven seven five ten of the City of Rocky Ford Municipal Code to remove references to foul chickens, geese and turkeys on final reading. Um, Sid, look for any feedback there or a motion.
Can we just cut through this and let's motion to approve ordinance number nine eighty-five, nine eighty-six, nine eighty-seven and nine eighty-eight on final reading.
Is there any questions on nine eighty-six with the bees?
Not for me, it's. I, I do have one on nine eighty-seven, um, so I'd like to, we'll just, we can move through these separately and. Address the questions as they come up.
We do two, we do one point, point one and point two together, like we did last time?
I move that we approve nine eighty-five.
Second. Uh, we have a motion in second to approve ordinance number nine eighty-five and ordinance amending, uh, section seven seven five five ten of the Rocky Ford Municipal Code. To remove references to foul chickens, geese and turkeys on final reading.
Oh.
Well.
We, we had a second on my motion for all four, don't we have to vote on that?
No, you didn't tap a motion.
We did have a second there?
We did.
So we have.
We had a second from Michael.
You have to really get each title though on a, on that ordinance.
You gotta read it all.
I'll do it if that's what you want, I mean. Motion to approve nine eighty-five, an ordinance amending seven seven five ten of the City of Rocky Ford Municipal Code. To remove references to foul chickens, geese and turkeys on final reading. To approve ordinance number nine eighty-six, an ordinance repealing seven seven five fifty on the City of Rocky Ford Municipal Code relating to the keeping of bees on final reading. Uh, approval of ordinance number nine eighty-seven, an ordinance regulating the keeping of chickens in City of Rocky Ford residential areas on final reading. And approval of ordinance number nine eighty-eight, an ordinance to allow backyard beekeeping within the city limits of the City of Rocky Ford on final reading.
I would like to hear what you had to say though about nine eighty-seven.
Um, I will either, I, so what I would like to do is, is I would like to just provide the feedback that. Roosters has continued to come up and has come up more, and I would be looking to make an amendment, um, to include. A prohibition on roosters.
I think it's not so, I'd say leave it alone.
I second the motion. So, yeah, we got a, we got a backup, so, yeah, we got your motion and that was second. So I.
All four, that's golden. Waste some time.
So I, I'll make a motion to amend that motion to include a prohibition on roosters on ordinance number nine eighty-seven.
Doesn't.
Don't we have to vote on it first? I don't think you can amend my motion. We've, we've argued about this for four hours.
It would be, it would be good to have them heard separate, so that way we do have the opportunity, um, we do.
We had a first and a second.
We do already have that first and a second, um, so I did make a motion for an amendment.
I, can I second that amendment?
Okay, so we have a motion in the second.
But we haven't voted on.
But we need to go back to his original.
Can you, can he amend someone else's motion, you cannot.
Because that's where we thought we were at and then somebody motioned and it went.
Everyone, 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 let's bring it back over here, let's bring it back over here.
I think we have to take care of the first motion and second.
Unless he withdraws it.
Well, Nick. Someone else can amend the motion, the, the first, so he can amend Nick's.
So the amended motion is.
Has four, all four of them in it? They are.
All those in favor of the motion.
Okay, and what is the.
Let's bring the tension over here. Amendment to approve, um, approve that motion with a prohibition on, with roosters as an exclusive.
Okay, and that needs to be changed in the wording, cause it's already been published once.
In ordinance number nine eighty-seven.
So we'll have to, do we have to, uh, read that one again?
Uh.
If we amended J R, do we have to read it again?
Because it's already been published the first time on first reading.
This would be our, our second, so any amendment here, this would be the final.
No, I, it's just, I think I have to run it twice, but that, it'll be all right. It was, but. So, so what are we voting on here? So who made your second, uh?
Roberts.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, I seconded Dwayne's amendment.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
With the amendment.
Yes.
Yes.
Mullins.
No.
Montano.
Yes.
Aron.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Gerlay.
Yes. Okay, so that, uh, motion passes six to.
All four chickens, no roosters.
That, that motion, um, on the amendment passes, um, six to one. And the amendment was to approve all four ordinances with the amendment to ordinance number nine eighty-seven. Uh, which would provide a, a prohibition on, uh, roosters, so roosters would not be allowed.
Let's do this.
So. That motion is, has passed, um, I'll just re-clarify, um, we have had. Ordinance number nine eighty. Six. An ordinance amending section seven seven five ten of the City of Rocky Ford Municipal Code to remove references to foul chickens, geese and turkey on, has. Been approved on final reading. Ordinance number nine eighty-six and ordinance repealing section seven seven five fifty of the City of Rocky Ford Municipal Code relating to the keeping of bees has been approved on final reading. Ordinance number nine eighty-seven, an ordinance regulating the keeping of chickens in the City of Rocky Ford's residential areas on, has been approved on final reading. Ordinance number nine eighty-eight, an ordinance to allow backyard beekeeping within the city limits of the City of Rocky Ford has been approved on final reading.
You can put the amendment in there at all.
It's. We, we, yeah, we, we already approved that, but it's re-reading the titles. So those have all been passed on the second reading, so.
Get your chickens.
Councilman Martinez, thank you for taking the, the lead on this again. And, uh, yeah, so, you know, everyone. If, uh, you know, if you have questions about what is allowed, what isn't, um, you know, this will be. This will be posted here at City Hall before you'll see it online, um, so I, I would encourage, uh, people to, uh, look at that and the website, the website as well. Um, we'll have the ordinances posted on there, so you can, um, look on there and, and kind of read through the rules. Um, Councilman Barone also did ask that we provide some sort of, uh, literature, some, kind of some, uh. Guides or, you know, maybe some frequently asked questions, um, and that's something that we'll work on to be able to provide that and just help people. Um, have a good understanding of, of what this allows and what's not allowed.
Well, you told me that it was, uh, they were voting on the first motion as amended, so that's what we voted on. Yes. As amended. Mr. Mays, Mays has a question.
Twelve, twelve is the limit there. Oh, really?
Message me in the morning, I'll show you, I'll give you the contact info for my lady.
All right, great work, everyone, I, I, yeah, I'd, I'd say, you know, thank you to everyone for. For, you know, providing the feedback, giving it to where it is, um, you know, this is something that has, uh, it's important. Um, it's, it's come up before, it's come up again, and, uh, you know, now we, here we are.
It was, it was typed wrong. That should say more than, no more than twelve adult chickens.
What does it say?
Just says chickens.
It doesn't say adult, like, adult was what we pushed through last, last time, yeah, was what we agreed on. And it's not typed up properly, that.
I didn't make any changes to it, so if you had amendments, I.
We can, we can amend this on the next session. Or like to make any improvements.
Yeah, I need to have those in writing.
I printed it to you on paper and then you said you wanted an email, so I emailed them to you and I, I don't know what I'm.
No, I typed up what you gave me and I, but if you made an amendment on it, I need to know about it.
Well, it was, it was.
All right, so, yeah, we'll, we'll follow up on that, um, I think, last thing that I wanna say to this.
Yeah, you know, you gotta find it.
Um, you know, it's, it's been something that has, you know, been contentious enough, uh, for it to, to take this long and, you know, we do. Recognize, I wanna recognize that there are people in the community, um, who, you know, would prefer people not to have chickens, would prefer their next door neighbors not to have chickens. Um, you know, so what I wanna challenge all of us and, you know, those who, uh, are excited about this and who are planning to. Keep backyard chickens, um, or bees, is, uh, you know, just please be as responsible as, as you can, um. There's, you know, cleanliness issues, there's noise issues, um, you know, as much as possible, you know, do what you can to, you know, take care of them. Um, and be a good neighbor and, you know, please, um, don't, I, I'd say, you know, don't ruin it for the rest of the people. Um, you know, hopefully this, you know, works out, everybody does what they're supposed to do, takes care of them and it. Um, provides the benefit to their household, that's, it's intended to. All right, we'll move on to new business.
Do I have to go through a whole amendment to get that type of this, because what was saying does say adult chickens, that needs to be cleared. We, we discussed that for well too long. I sent it through an email, I don't know what, why it's not a comping effect situation.
Yeah, we, we gotta go with what was posted and then we, we made it an amendment, and so that would have been our opportunity.
So the difference between what he, what adult being in there and not being in there is that you wanna be able to have twelve adult chickens and you wanna be able to have chicks or?
I wanna be able to, as my flock age is, be able to be replacing them, while the older ones are raising the younger ones. I want to be able to, as my flock age is, be able to be replacing them while the older ones are raising the younger ones to teach them and then the elder ones go away, so I'm still within my twelve egg-laying adult chickens. I'm okay with the roosters being gone, that's fine, but if we're, if we're replacing and we're rotating flock, the right way to do it is to have them raised by, and who knows what she's doing. And then when she's pulled from the flock, I'm back to my twelve. That is what we approved. Before we passed it on, you're right, maybe I should have read those.
And what was pub, and what was published doesn't say adult in it?
Well, what was emailed to her, certainly was emailed to you guys.
I don't, I don't get them printed to me and handed to me. So, it's in my email.
All right, so either, either way on this, um, you, we'll, we'll have to bring, revisit this, bring it back.
Well, then we need to figure something out about that, because if, if she's not able to receive it and just copy and paste it, that, we need to figure out whatever that looks like, because I'm sending it from the email and the Chromebook that was given to me by the city. I don't see what the problem, I.
Yeah, no, so. Let's, let's also hold accountability for ourselves as, as the policymakers. We're the ones responsible for writing these. Uh, so it's, it's really, you know, I'll say thank you to Rebecca for, um, taking that from you and, and doing the work of typing it up, but that is not her responsibility at all. Um, so, you know, we can, we can work on this and get it fixed. It sounds like everyone is kind of in the same place on it, um, but let's, we'll go through that process.
So we're on paper, I'm told I'm not, that's not the way to bring it. I bring it all to y'all, I gave her a copy and then it was, that's not the right way. I just need to know what is the accepted way that we're doing this moving forward, so it's done that way.
So the, the templates, the templates that you see that we have here is pretty much exactly what you could use. It's a Word document.
And that's what I sent her.
And you can, you can take that and make any, you know, create ordinances or amendments. And that's what we would look at and present.
His, 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 he wants to be able to rotate them in, so he wants to get chicks that, so he wants to have.
Yep, all right, yeah, thank you, Robert. Okay, so we are moving on to new business. We have item. Thank you. All right, so, yeah, I'm looking at my old copy. We do have, um, under old business, item thirteen point five. It's our contract for legal services. Uh, so everyone's had an opportunity to review that, if anyone has any feedback. For a motion just to approve, um, entering into contract for legal services, and that would be with Hoffman, Parker, Wilson, and Carberry, um, to provide city attorney services for City of Rocky Ford.
Wonder if that would take effect?
It would take effect today. Kind of next steps is, they will schedule some time with us. Uh, it'll be kind of to start a phone call with, um, Stacy and I, and then from that, I think we would invite them to, uh, come down and visit, and we can either set that, um, you know, maybe for our, one of our work sessions, um, or have them come to maybe the next council meeting.
Should we meet them before we approve this? I mean, I know we did talk about that.
I know, we did talk about wanting to talk to them a little bit before we approve this. Or Zoom, or, I mean. Hi, who are you?
For what it's worth, I mean, the resume is all I care about. I really don't care what the thing looks like.
So are, are you looking to do an interview and review, or what, what would be the, the intention? So is it possible after the meet and greet, we would decide that we don't want to enter into agreement with them?
Well, I mean, that's everyone that's been on this, right?
Right.
And if we don't go into an agreement with them, we're still kind of on a case-by-case basis with Nathan, right? He's busy.
The, the Zoom meetings and everything?
No, no, they provide services for some of our neighbors and others around rural Colorado, and that's, um, kind of how it's done. So we would be, we'd be looking to them to even provide some recommendations on how we can accommodate.
I mean, I feel like they.
We all kind of like them.
Specialty is what they do is what we're looking for. I, I mean, we need an attorney, but we need somebody that, you know.
I would, I, to be honest, I would even be in support of that meet and greet being, um, over the digital means instead of having them come out here, if it, if it costs different, which I assume it would.
Okay, let's, let's bring it back to, uh, this, this other conversation here. Okay, yeah.
And that's kind of our, that's our, at our discretion.
Consensus of council, right now we're looking at, um, we, we have a, an agreement, um, that was sent over, and then after this, we would kind of start our onboarding with them. Um, would council like to table this and set up a, either a separate meeting to meet with them? Um, or invite, or set up a meeting at our next, uh, one of our upcoming meetings?
I wouldn't. I find it imperative that we get council on board immediately.
We're not without counsel. You say that like we're without counsel, but we're not without counsel right now. We have counsel, he's.
Let me rephrase that. I find that it's imperative that we get this council on board immediately.
So you're just looking for a motion to approve this contract then?
If, if the discussion's done, then I'll make that motion.
I mean, that's what we're doing either way, right?
That's what's gonna happen.
We can deal with the meeting then later. So, I mean, just motion to approve the contract.
One of things, and, and not sure if, you know, there's a concern of whether or not, you know, we're gonna want to continue doing business with them, but, um, city attorneys are, are, you know, very at will, um, so that contract can be terminated at any time. A thirty day notice is preferred. Um, our, our municipal judge and our city attorney, I mean, our, uh, city manager, do require contracts, do require, um, you know, different things for separation. Um, city attorney is the, the one of our three appointed officers that can be, we can separate with at will, truly at will.
With that, I make a motion that we approve the contract for, uh, legal services.
And authorize Duane to sign.
And authorize Duane to sign, um, with, uh, Hoffman, Parker, Wilson, and Cranberry, um, PC.
Carberry.
Carberry, thank you.
I second. Okay, we have the motion from Mullins, second from Martinez. Will you call the vote, Rebecca?
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Mayor Gerrelay.
Yes. Okay, so we will get this signed, return to them, and we'll set up some time, um, to do our onboarding and that first step, and that would be to, uh, meet with them. Um, so we could, um, would you all like to ask them to come down in person for the next meeting? Or would it be good to just start with Zoom?
If there's, if there's a price difference, I say save the city the money.
It's gonna be a big, big price difference.
That's what I'm gonna say, three hundred and fifty dollars an hour times five hours.
I'll, I'll, I'll check on that and we'll see, and if possible, get them down. Um, but if it is kind of a matter of, of that, uh, hourly cost, then we'll, we're counting on Zoom.
Yeah, if they can, if they can be like, as a favor for new cut line, it's great.
Uh, so I think even too, we will have a work session coming up. Our new work sessions are gonna begin next week. Uh, so I'll see if maybe we can set some time, uh, for that, and then we would be ready for them come next regular meetings.
So if we're doing work sessions on the first and third Tuesdays from two to four, does that mean we're not doing work sessions prior to the meetings, or you don't have to be here till seven?
Right.
Okay, just clarify.
We can always change it up if we need to have.
We can, we can. I'm just trying to clarify.
It's two to four, right? First and third Tuesdays?
So we'll work session opposite weeks, so first Tuesday, we'll work session two to four.
It's, yes, would they, they would be first and third Tuesdays.
First and third, yeah.
Two to four.
Yes, and then on second and fourth Tuesdays, we don't have to be here till seven for the actual meeting, not a work session ahead of time. That'll be nice in the summer.
What time, two to what?
Two to four.
Yeah, mine rides the bus, damn.
New business already.
All right, yep, now we'll move on to our new business.
Yeah.
Yes.
On the first and third Tuesdays. No prior to meeting work sessions.
New business, we have item fourteen one, which is city manager performance evaluation. Uh, so Stacy has been with us, um, started in a term role just about a year ago. Um, if we, finally, finally, uh, the decision was made and Stacy was brought on as full-time city manager in, uh, June. Um, part of the contract was that we would pre-perform an annual evaluation, um, that kind of happens at the beginning of the year. Um, so the council did provide those, uh, performance evaluation ratings. Uh, and they were able to get those over. We, um, compiled those into a report, and we met with Stacy today. At our special meeting earlier today, um, for an executive session to, uh, go over that performance review. So now kind of just open it up for any, uh, discussion. One of the things that we're looking at is, um, the compensation and, and contract renewal there. Um, so that was shared and, um, the proposed change right now would be a, um, a salary increase which would equate to, um, a three point four percent cost of living increase as well as a five percent merit, uh, increase. And then there would be a change in the contract, a proposed change in the contract, um, to the automobile, uh, clause, um, which previously said that the city of Rocky Ford would provide a city vehicle to the city manager. Um, the proposed change would be that the city, um, would provide a monthly allowance, um, of five hundred dollars uh, for use of her personal automobile for city business. Um, so it would be removing that city provided vehicle and providing a, a dollar allowance. So kind of open it up for any questions.
The concern I have is, I was Stacy said you, you'd agree to the body thing portion there, but for the personal use, uh, use of personal vehicle is in the business. But to me, I mean, it's, we just agreed to purchase a truck. Eleven thousand dollars a year, five years, piece of home. We're gonna be paying six thousand dollars a year just for working with you. Five years, that'd be thirty thousand dollars, a vehicle costs one thirty-four dollars, now it's one. To me, it's a place to.
Well, that's, that's, uh, just on your point though, that, that's maintenance and gas and everything, so it's.
Yeah, we're not covering insurance, maintenance, gas.
It's a significant savings to the city. There's a little bit, and I, I would support making an amendment that if it's going to be used, the personal vehicle's being used for city usage, that there's a liability insurance requirement of the two hundred and fifty thousand minimum. I don't know if that's enforceable, uh, but. That is, auto insurance is one of those weird things. It's, it is something, and health insurance, you can't, the city, the state can't force you to have it, and they have, they enforce certain limits. Rather, the city wields that power, I don't know, but I don't suspect that Stacy's really gonna put a punch in the fight if we suggest that. It's thirty, it's, it's thirty thousand is the minimum coverage, which doesn't really cover like, whatever, that's creepy.
So you think what, what the, and I'm not sure if, want to clarify, but it sounds like the amendment would be setting a specific dollar amount? Uh, cause as is, it would, it says that the city manager is responsible for paying for liability, property damage, and comprehensive insurance coverage upon such vehicle and for all expenses attended to the purchase operation, maintenance, repair, and regular replacement of said vehicle.
Yeah.
So it's saying that she does have to, um, carry liability, property damage, and comprehensive. So if it be setting a, would you be looking to set a minimum?
Yeah, I honestly don't care about, uh, comprehensive coverage. That, that's gonna cover the vehicle. She wants to replace the vehicle if it's, it's damaged, I don't care. It's, it's injury to, to people that is the real concern. Um, and that's your liability. So your general liability, um, I think, Mr. Barone said that, uh, when he used personal vehicles in his previous job, there were, there's three hundred thousand. That's what I personally carry is, uh, well, I carry five hundred, I carry three hundred on motorcycles. I don't think I can injure anybody except for myself on the motorcycle, but, um, it's not a significant change in price.
The two fifty was your, is what you're putting out, that it'd be per incident or is it, or it'd be both four?
Well, i- insurance is always per incident for liability. They'll just drop you if you have too many of them.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with putting a minimum in there of two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, if that's what it means.
I mean, I think it would help him, and I think if it is smart for the city.
I don't see Stacy as a bare minimum kind of person. I feel like she's driving a, I mean, she's driving a car that is financed. Financing requires you to have full coverage insurance. I mean, it, putting a minimum in there, I don't think it's gonna make any difference. I mean, she's gotta make a phone call to her insurance and say, I need the levels, make change to this, what's it gonna cost?
No, it's, it's not gonna make any difference. Full coverage though is only, it, it only requires thirty thousand for liability in Colorado, which is, should be illegal.
And it doesn't go far.
No, it, it doesn't. Um, but, yeah, I mean, the, it, and, and, and yes, Stacy's probably not the minimum person, but if we ever have a situation where some similar agreements worked out with another employee, this might be used as a template there too, and we start running into this risk, we're, okay, eventually we will have somebody that doesn't have enough coverage and they injure somebody and they're thirty thousand dollars.
Stacy's contract, it's not anyone else's.
I mean, if, if we're not in support of that amendment, I understand. I just made the case for it.
I'm okay with that.
And this will, like you said earlier, this, the way the ordinance city has right now, if an employee uses a personal vehicle for city business, they have to get prior permission, which she would already have, she's the manager, but, uh.
This wouldn't be a government vehicle, it would be here.
Well, not on the personal, but, uh, it's just, uh.
Yeah, if, if someone wants to use their personal vehicle for city business, they need prior approval.
So this won't be in conflict of any way with, with that one, there with the insurance limits or anything, the way it's working for them?
Being this in the contract, this would be that prior, prior approval.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but what I'm saying, in the city, con, in city right now, as for other employees, what we did, the, the pledge or the, there's, there's a clause in there, if the city employee, for whatever reason, has to use a personal vehicle to go somewhere, the city business, they have to get prior approval, and it will be reimbursed at, at, at the rate, IR's rate. Well, now, just that, for those, that this isn't gonna hinder or come in conflict with any of that, is it?
This is her contract. This doesn't affect anyone else. This is her contract.
I, I get that, so it, it's saying, would Stacy using personal vehicle also then be able to trigger that where?
Somebody else might ask.
No, not someone else, where she would then submit a reimbursement, um, which is what that policy states.
But this would trump that.
This already trumps that by saying that she's responsible for all that, and that, that even trumps that, that dollar amount. This says, it, this says right here, she is responsible for all of the expenses to do with that. So that doesn't matter if she wants to carry basic liability or if she wants to carry the max. It's, it, the city's covered. The city is.
The city's, insurance wise, that's not correct. Um, it, it, as an agent, I can tell you.
Well, if she gets in a wreck and her insurance isn't covered, that, that's on her.
No, it'll, it'll, it will be on the city.
But she has to inform her insurance company that she uses her vehicle.
It's not an expensive increase.
They increase it.
Like probably thirty dollars.
It's, I've never seen anything that cheap, but.
I pay eighty dollars a month for four motorcycles and three hundred.
Cheap.
Full coverage. Three hundred thousand dollars.
Alright, let's, let's bring it, let's bring it back to this.
I also have insurance, but I can't guarantee them right now.
So I think, you know, kind of, any, any comments as far as this, if, if there are changes anyone would like to see? Right now, we can make strikes in this and we can make amendments. And then, you know, bring it back next time or just make an amendment now? We can make an amendment now and propose that. But bef- before we get into the motion, let's, you know, we're, we're kind of having, having discussions. So if anyone has more discussion on this or wants to speak anything, if, yeah, I'd say this, we'll, we'll stick to the contract.
I'm fine with Mr. Mullins, Councilman Mullins amendment, I'm fine with that. And then the only other question was, the other employees, you know, they're gonna be dealt a little bit differently than hers, so as long as there's no conflict there, the thinking is okay.
Their policy is their policy. What's in her contract is what's her, her deal.
And the five hundred covers everything.
That's what she gets.
So if I, if I made a motion to approve that visit?
Let's, let's, yeah, let's hold our motion. Uh, is there any other discussion here?
No.
Good. Alright, um, so one of the things I would like to do is just kind of, if we can kind of just take a, take a round. And, you know, right now, we are, you know, talking about the performance evaluation. And, you know, if there's anything we'd like to share with Stacy that, you know, is, is appropriate for, for public meeting.
I don't have anything. I think we've spoken.
I'm comfortable with where we, how we left it during.
I'll make a comment, though, just so that the public knows. My personal feelings is that we're very lucky to have Stacy here. She's done an amazing job with honestly very little direction. And it's, I think everybody knew that it was gonna be a very difficult job to walk into. And I'm proud of what she's achieved for Rocky Ford. I thought that's all.
I'd go through more. Stacy, yeah, appreciated, you know, like we kind of led with, you know, so you came into this position. You had a lot, had a lot going on, you know, so you knew you were coming into a lot. And you let us know that you were confident in your ability to do that. And we were appointed as our city manager. So here we are, you know, little, almost a year since you stepped into that role as a term. And from the community, from council, and just kind of know the general consensus of the organization as a whole. Our livelihood is supportive, you know, we appreciate what you have done and what you'll continue to do. And, you know, as we kind of proposed this, there's a cost of living adjustment, which is standard, but then also a five percent merit increase to compensate, you know, for what you have done in that conference.
Thank you.
Do you have to, if there's anything you wanna speak to?
No, I, just thank you. Thank you for your support. Appreciate the opportunity.
Alright, so now we'll look to anything on, on the contract, if you want to make any motions and amendments here.
I would like to move that we approve it with the amendment that the vehicle be required, the personal vehicle be required to carry two hundred and fifty thousand dollar per incident, five hundred thousand dollar maximum per incident. Five hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar per person, five hundred thousand dollar per incident. General liability coverage.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion from Councilman Mullins with an amendment to number nine under the automobile. And we have second from Councilwoman Roberts. Call the vote.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yeah.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Or Rob.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Stacy. Alright, our next item will be new business fourteen, the two. And it'll be the discussion, street sweeper purchase. So Rick, if you wanna present?
Chicken. He threw something at Kuko. Throw something back.
How you doing? Pretty good. How are you guys tonight? Street sweeper, right?
I took it by your hand.
Okay.
I, I started gathering and thought we'd get it before everybody ran away. Are there seven there? Six or seven at least?
Yes, sir.
That should be right, except we're just minus twos.
Thank you so much.
We're Jerry's. You should ask him, not me. He makes the schedules. Well, we should not. Based on what we've discussed, we should not be here at six that day. We should be there at eight. We already set the meeting schedule for the year. I don't think we can change that.
Alright, alright, everyone. So Rick, Rick is up here with us.
Jerry.
We're gonna be discussing the street sweeper.
Well, you guys just, I don't, what would you like to know? I didn't even know.
I know one question that was raised earlier by Robert was do we know what it would cost to repair and make the one we own operational? Just for our information.
We had it at one point. It was astronomical to get it fixed.
So, but these are astronomical as well, so I think we just kind of wanted to.
Um, I, I mean, I can get that for you and get it to you. It was, it was beyond our scope last time we did it.
Well, I, I, well, but he.
Well, it was the entire water system, the hydrostrat, on a Pelican, it's hydrostatic drive. It's not a transmission, and that was damaged. Um, we bought it used, it was in pretty tough shape when we got it. Uh, it probably started up, yeah. I mean, we can get it fired up, but the entire water system, but the, the biggest expense was, was the, the hydrostatic drive. It's not a regular transmission in a, in a Pelican. And it was, it was way more than, you know, what it was even worth. And then anybody that's looked at it would give a scrap weight for it. So we, we brought people, Bruckners out, we brought um, firms that, you know, i- if it was worth anything and they could put some money in it, they would have taken it.
As we got offered a scrap weight on it.
Well, if I were to, would it be traded for?
I, I mean, again, scrap, I mean, when we find one that you guys want to agree on, we can sure go there. I couldn't answer what they would give us now at this point.
So I guess that one of the questions I have is, I'm all ready, will they come with service contract?
Well, no, the ones that cheaper than they're used. I mean, they, they're all, two of them, two of them, they, I, I think there was a twenty-five thousand dollar add-on to, to retrofit them and get them all up to grade, and you've got a broom, drags, main broom. You gotta realize, I, I, I guess the biggest thing for tonight is to see which direction you guys wanna go, mechanical or regenerative air. And I, I drove a street sweeper for Palo Alto for eight plus years, drove a route, and regenerative air sweeper was punishment to us. When, when one of the Elgin Pelicans went down, we had Timco backup, the regenerative air sweepers. I don't know who was here, I know you were here when we had that demo. And, and they came out, but regenerative air was always our backup choice. And if we had one go down and had to go into service, we had to take a Timco out, and everybody hated life when we had to do it, so. Well, it, it, it's just a, a fixed head where we have crowned, I'd say eighty percent of our streets are crowned from over excessive cracked ceiling. And that, that fixed head just has a hard time. You've got a section head, and you got, you got air coming in and section going up, and it's they just don't perform as well as a mechanical sweeper does in a, in a Pelican.
I mean, personally, I'm, I'm happy to defer to your expertise when it comes to what type of equipment is needed. My concern is about the sustainability of the program and how we're going to fund it, because it's one thing to throw ninety grand at a sweet, sweet, street sweeper. We also need to account for the labor and the repair of the vehicle and the other expenses involved.
And I tried to include that in that handout that you've gotten.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing pricing on these, and I just pulled up the email and I don't see it.
And I tried to do that, too, when I was sitting back there, and I thought we had a pricing sheet on it.
Well, yeah.
We, we're about a hundred and twenty-five K. They're, they're around a hundred to take them as is, and they were twenty-five K to retrofit and refurbish.
What was one twenty-five and the one was one thirty-five?
Is this in the email from you, not the one from Rebecca?
Yeah, all of them are used. A, a, a new Elgin Pelican right now, I, I mean, you can find it, but you're looking at three hundred K plus.
So can I, can I ask, so I know it's, it's, you're recommending we go with mechanic, recommendation for a mechanical street sweeper in route implementation? So which, which one of these is the mechanical versus?
Well, that, the Delevo is, is kind of an odd bird, because it's mechanical and regenerative air. And it, we demoed it, and it was a nice little sweeper, but it's more of a parking lot sweeper. More of a, an event sweeper, dust control. It, it's not a take it out and beat it every day on a route sweeper.
So is that what, so you're?
That little Delevo that.
This recommendation as you wanna go with Pelicans?
I, I would, yeah, with, with my experience, a, a mechanical, the Pelican's hard to beat. A majority of the maintenance that you're gonna do on it's a main, main broom, gutter brooms, and and you've got some drags on the side that you replace the rubber on it. In-house, that's gonna be way easier for us.
So we don't have a, so in the email originally from the queen to you, did we eliminate the possibility of the two thousand and nine? You didn't like that one?
No, I didn't eliminate anything. I honestly didn't even know we were considering a sweeper.
I don't think, I don't, did I say the oh nine?
You sent three, you sent three links. It's got the oh nine and the two twenty seventeen Pelicans. They're all Pelicans. This one's not in your original email, cause I think that one's from a different company.
So one of the things that I'll back us up to is when we, at the, the, I'm not gonna say the last meeting, but whenever we discuss this, we kind of handed it over to, we wanted to go with your recommendation of the Delevo from this prior conversation. And can we look at quotes on those? And then there was a question about can we get a breakdown on what the operational costs were going to be? So are, are you?
Like a, a, a service contract, so we can't do in-house, that it, it's like kind of tied up with it, we have.
Well, I think that would be once we hung down in on which ones we're looking at. But the, I think it was, I don't know if it was Robert, but just they wanted to, a kind of a estimate of, you know, how you were gonna be able to sustain this. So your, you know, man hours and that were the, I think, the two items. So with this, I'm, I'm asking, are, are you no longer recommending we go with the Delevo? And you wanna instead go with the Pelican?
Well, I, I don't ever remember recommending the Delevo, but.
I thought you recommended the Pelican.
Um, I don't remember this. I think the Delevo, in my opinion, is more of a parking lot sweeper.
So in, in July, when Councilwoman Fuller had brought Tim, the Timco rep down here with Inter, Intermountain, you, you wrote this statement on July thirteenth and kind of, you know, gave us some your thoughts on old sweepers, the Timco, and the Delevo. Your recommendation was that we go with the Delevo.
The Delevo would be better than the Timco.
Hard line.
Yeah, the Delevo would have been better. It was a demo unit. We were gonna get it real cheap, and it would be better than nothing. At that point in time, they brought it down, and we did go out and drive it, and it, it seemed to work pretty good, but I don't know if it would hang with the riggers of running a route five days a week. You know?
At that time, we didn't have Pelican in the, in the mix at all, because they weren't brought down. They only brought the other one down, where he was only going off of what he had.
Well, I didn't even know she was bringing that.
The hard line is, is, was Rick's recommendation against the Timco.
Yeah, if we were gonna buy one that day, yeah, that's, I would have rather went with the Delevo. But we've all, I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff we've gotta figure out now in ordinance. Parking's gonna be an issue. Are, are we gonna try to accomplish our route? And, you know, are we gonna get the whole city in ten days, fifteen days?
Do you have, do you remember when the last, I guess, the last day we would have done, I guess, year, when the last time we would have done street sweeping?
Oh, God, it's been a while. It's been at least six.
Right, twenty eighteen?
Yeah, it's been a while. Since that thing, we, we had issues with it from the day we got it. I mean.
So what, what, I guess what would be different from twenty eighteen and today?
We didn't set routes. They just, they got us a street sweeper, and we went out and started started playing with it and cleaning up sites. We did a lot of utility cuts. When we have main breaks and stuff like that, we would take it out and clean up after that. You see all the, all the sand out in the streets now at the intersections that we dump, and we've got no way to clean it up, we would use that.
But.
We didn't do any route sweeping.
Speaking of regular, regular routine street sweeping.
We, we didn't ever set up routes. We never did.
Since you've been here, we have.
Yeah, we, we've never had route sweeping since we, when we got that Elton Pelican, routes were never set up and swept.
We just did it.
Well, we used it where we needed it, yeah. They came down once, yeah, twice for us, I think, and swept Main Street before the parade.
These, these two Elton Pelicans that you have here, that we have in front of us, they're virtually the same, a couple of differences. You're looking at them, are there any? Is there anything on these pieces of equipment that the city does not need that is included with them, or it's something that they?
No, they're, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward what they are. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure they're even still available. How long ago did I give that to you, Stacy?
This email was sent on Sunday, February twenty.
Well, the email, but when did I give them to you? I mean, it was probably before that. So we would have to reach back out, but that's, you know, a generalization of what things are going for right now. And, and we can even find them cheaper. I got on auction sites today before it, and I was finding some eighty thousand, ninety thousand. And then they've got a, a pretty much standard across more twenty-five K to go through the whole thing.
And we're at your fit, we're.
Well, they'll give us new drags, they'll give us a new main broom, they give us, you know, two new gutter brooms on it, and they, they check out the water system and the, the whole nine yards. They certify that it's ready to go. And I can't tell you that on a used one. I imagine we could get somebody to do it.
Well, if you're paying the twenty-five thousand, it's a good one.
I couldn't tell you that right now.
If we can give them some guidance, so it sounds like we're not ready to move forward on this. Is, is there, is there additional information that everyone would like?
Like, so like, basically, man, it's like, we can't handle in-house. Like, if something mechanically breaks down, like you said, the hydrostat system broke down. If you get that covered in your extended warranty or in the service.
Well, then you're talking probably a new sweeper, right? I doubt they're gonna do that for a, for, for the, you know, an eighteen or.
No, I get that, but I'm saying it wouldn't hurt to ask.
No, I don't, we, well, we certainly would ask, and, and what, what would it cost, you know, to add on a, on a used one, too, so.
So this, this might be helpful, just kind of going back from your, your previous recommendation. So one of the things that you pointed out about Intermountain was that to your knowledge, they do not have service trucks. This means we would be sending the sweepers to. This means we would be sending the sweepers to Denver for every repair. And Hardline, um, did have service. So, can we look at, you know, just using that as, as an example of, um, you know, we might not have, you know, service warranties on these used things, but, um, you know, based on.
Who can come out and service that technology for us?
Different vendors, you know, are, where are we gonna have the least downtime, lowest cost to keep this operational?
Yeah, it still costs us a little bit. So, why don't, why don't we do this and you guys write down what questions you might have, get them to her and then we can sure. Could, the, I don't even know that any of these are available.
Questions that we're gonna have to follow up with?
They are, yeah.
I just want.
From, from the last conversation, and just to remind, last conversation is we thought we had hung down, kinda taking your recommendation. So, we told Cucco, uh, can you get us three quotes on it, on whatever Delevo model you want? And then, uh, Robert asked, Robert asked about a breakdown of what it'll cost. So, I know we kinda have a narrative around the challenges, but if you can kind of give us a breakdown, hey, if we're to start this in June, um, it's gonna cost us this much through the rest of this year that we didn't already plan for. So, you know, whatever that, if, if that's one, somebody off a different team, or if that's hiring somebody new, you know, give us that kinda cost breakdown because we would use that to consider in, in this.
And when it comes to future equipment replacement, I think that's one thing that we need to be particularly mindful of because we're not always gonna have the 90 grand or the 100 grand to do that. So, I'd like to have some sort of estimate, realistic estimate about how many years this can last us, like short and long. So, that way we can plan, like, look, there's a possibility this dies in three years. So, we need to take, create that 30 grand every year to put it away for it. Or it's, I'm not just, I just.
Well, and I, I mean, rule of thumb is we got a five-year capital improvement replacement program for every piece of equipment we have, which has been a, a challenge over the years. Look at our Skidsteer now, and I mean, so plan on five years and you replace the same. Should be with the trash truck and every other major piece of equipment that we have. And whether we sell it or trade it off, I mean, with the trash truck, I think we should keep the old, the new one that is new to us now and that would be our backup, that we get rid of the old one that we have. So, yeah, I mean, plan on five years for everything, but I can certainly get these answered for you. You just said they're both still available?
Well, and then, we need to do some work on that end too. So, so he can recommend a, a truck, but we're the policy writers. So, we need to get a policy right together, looking at the ordinance to have people's cars moved on their day of street sweeping. Are we doing outside, even side? Are we doing, you know, all, a nice street and you move all your cars off of that or where they park? So, whatever that looks like, we need to get that done. Whatever signage needs to be done, that's, should be on our end to work hand in hand with them. We have, we've gotta figure out possibly, and it's in his report, we talked about it earlier, possibly adding, you know, like we do our mosquito spray, a couple of dollar charge there for street sweeping to help build up that, that five-year budget to buy a new vehicle or cover maintenance. So, there's stuff on our end that needs to be done as well as what he's doing. And I'm willing to help do some of that if somebody wants to come along, trying to figure out how to write these so that we can.
The ordinance would, would go a long way. I mean, we're definitely gonna have to have that.
Cause we've gotta be able to give you some teeth that if somebody doesn't move their car, I mean, you go, you go to the big cities, you don't move your car while it's tickets told.
Yeah.
They, they order tag, I think, they show up an hour later and then it's gone.
Well, and we could start it out, we could start the program by posting.
Right, we wouldn't do that immediately.
And I, I mean, I think it's gonna be a learning curve on, are we bust it up into five quadrants? 10 quadrants? How are we gonna be able to go out dumping? Where are we gonna dump's another issue? How are we gonna pick up dumping? You know, if we dump on the street, then you've got another guy gotta go out and load her and then we've got another guy's gotta go in. And a pickup truck, the, the one thing with the hydrostatic on the Pelican is your deadhead times nothing, it doesn't go. You know, so if you're way out on the other side of town and we gotta go all the way to the pit and dump and, and one street you could fill up, or you might get three streets and, and your hopper's full and you got a deadhead back and forth, it could be 30 minutes.
And that only goes, what, 10 miles an hour?
Yeah, and, and even at, at 10 or 15 miles an hour is scary on a hydrostatic drive, so.
And then we need to figure out funding because we're gonna have to dedicate a guidance. I mean, with our guys out there now, they're running short of the, kind of cover what needs to be done.
Well, we've got, I mean, we have some seasonal coming in and, I mean, I, I think as we, the learning curve on it, we could get in and do it now and then figure out if we do a dollar or a few bucks and, e- even if the citizens would support that.
Well, how many miles of street do we have here in town?
We have 28 miles.
28 miles of street, so double that because there's two sides to every street. So, we're looking at almost 60 miles that need to be done. How many miles of street a day can be done? Is this something that can be done once a month or is it gonna be bi-monthly? Are we gonna do the whole city twice a year? How, like, the logistics of all that, you have to figure out where it's gonna be.
And that's what would take us a while to figure it out.
Full-time, that's 20, what, 2,700 some hours a year, whatever a full-time employee is.
Yeah, we could easily have a full-time employee run the crowd.
So, I mean, are we gonna, you're gonna have a full-time street sweeper and that's what their job is gonna be? So, are we gonna put?
Well, in our area, we don't get a lot of snow.
Yeah, I was gonna say seasonal isn't here, right? I mean, we have such a temper climate that we get some storms.
You have a snowstorm, but the next week it's 70.
Yeah, exactly, like, right, this week.
But I, I, I just wanna make sure that we, we ask these guys to do something that we need to make sure we're supporting them and we're behind them and doing what we need to do. Cause if he comes in and says, hey, this is the truck I wanna buy, we go out and purchase it, but we've done none of this stuff.
Well, and we're excited to do it. I mean, this would help us immensely. This, this would, this would save us big time to get a, a sweeper and get a program and get it dedicated and get it rolling. There's just a whole lot more working parts to it than just take you to a sweeper and roll. And I think that's what happened to us last time.
How many hours, how many running hours do these typically last? You know, these, this one's got 3,000, this one's just under.
It, it's all on how they were taken care of.
Exactly, so I mean, if we're running a full-time street sweeper, that's 2,080 hours a year if they're running.
And, and the Pelican's pretty durable.
Is it gonna last longer than that?
Those are eight years old, they've only got 4,000 hours on.
No, that's just, just a thread about.
They could be coming from these qualities with multiple units.
I mean, and we never know how they could maintain, we don't know what, can we get service records on these kinds of things?
Sometimes, yeah.
So, can, can we get, can we get kind of three, three move forward quotes? You, you know, you're gonna hear questions.
You know, I'll start reaching out.
You know, you're gonna hear questions about warranties, service contracts, or anything like that that you could.
Certainly.
Maintenance records.
And, and again, we're excited for the opportunity. I hope nobody thinks that we don't wanna do this. Like I said, there's just a lot of moving parts on it.
We figured you might want one of these instead of paving some streets. We were, you know, but we're, it's a give and take around here, we can do everything every year.
How much street do you get for 90 grand these days?
Not much.
50, 60?
What we have now, you know, is it repairable?
Well, I, I mean, I could try to get somebody back out. When we had it looked at last time, it was, it was beyond the realm of trying to fix it.
Last time, I think that's more than sufficient. I don't think we need to lose somebody.
No, we don't have a sweeper mechanic. Well, we know one thing that the, the water system on it, it was, it, it was cracked. We had leaks on it when we first got it. You, you couldn't keep water in it and they had to replace, that was on part of the quote. But I'll dig through and see what we've got and we can certainly trade that in if somebody will take it. We couldn't get anybody that wanted it last time we were looking and there, there was somebody hauling off for sure.
Okay, but even to, this came up last time, we did talk about, you know, even if it was $1, you know, that's another asset that's sitting in our yard.
No, I, I agree, 100%.
And I know we've talked about before, you guys looking at some of those assets that can be disposed of.
And, and we are, we, and we have actively.
So, that we can, we can start clearing up your yard and know that every piece of equipment that's sitting in your yard is something that we're using out there. So, a couple of things, I got those, um, quotes, um, on our side. I think, you know, everyone kinda start thinking about, um, what ordinance looks like. Um, start having those conversations with people about, um, you know, what that fee could look like. So, on our side, let's start having those conversations and, and looking at that. And coming back together on this again at our, uh, we'll, we'll be good with two weeks. So, yeah, we'll, um, table this to our next meeting.
All right, thank you, guys.
Well, just for reference, uh, currently at that mosquito spray that we charge $2 per household per month, generates about $42,000 annually.
Yeah, we did that math earlier.
So, I have a whole calculation on what mosquito spray costs us. I'm sure it's gone up from $3,800 a drum.
We were saying every year.
But that also reduces the amount of mosquitoes that we can kill. So, it won't kill larva, it only kills anything that's active. So, if I was spraying Eevee, if the Eevee aren't active then Eevee. So, we spray in Eevee when the mosquito are more active and the Eevee, so I give a bunch of that.
Well, the larva is more of a homeowner.
It's standing water, you gotta do it to stand in water.
Yeah, if we all get homeowners, if your Eevee's too bad on time, you're gonna get killed.
Thank you, good.
All right, that's all we have. We'll move on to our second public comment. Anyone's black and white council, that's not on the agenda tonight. All right, our upcoming meetings, and this is a correction from the agenda stated on there, but our next work session will be March 18th. Tuesday, March 18th, uh, from 2 to 4 p.m. And then our next regular council meeting will be March 25th at 7 p.m. No other business, call the meeting adjourned 8:58.
Let's get there with that, of handling that 6 o'clock session. Should we consider in the future moving back to that 6 o'clock hour?
We were talking about that as summer. This is the Grand Peter bathroom, so like, we're just giving our, uh, lessons. And those two didn't get put on there, but I guess they could sign underneath.
I just saw that.
You're not on there, but just sign underneath. You collected all six of ours, his was the only one left. Just, just sign underneath one of those. Cause you two got forgotten.
We don't count?
You gotta add that in mid-term, you know? You gotta make that change. We gave you six of them. We gave it to you ahead of time, don't leave me, don't leave me. Is this your? Is this your recycle pile? Rebecca, did you get my email with the revisions? That's okay, just as long as you got it. Nick will take it to Little Nick. Forty, and on the way.
Hey, you gonna take your keys or what?
Well, that's Tom. He does that a lot here. I better go, my ride's already left.
I'm taking Tom's truck. Oh, he's got the Toyota today, all right. Do you have your ticket, bro?
No, I saw that.
Broom, broom party starter? Yeah, I'll take it.